Eileen, opening statement, please.
Planning board meeting Thursday, October 7th, 2021. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Planning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 8th, 2021, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Tredtown News. Second, on January 8th, 2021, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 8th, 2021, said notice was posted in the office of the planning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. Members of the public will have a chance to ask questions and comment on applications once the chairman opens the hearing up to members of the public. If you wish to ask questions or comments on an application, you will need to use the raise your hand feature and we'll bring you into the meeting one at a time. You will need to have audio and video capability. You will be sworn in and you will need to provide your name and address. For anyone calling in, you can raise or lower your hand by dialing star nine and you can mute or unmute yourself by dialing star six. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Eileen. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bavai, I just want to make sure he's not on yet. And I don't see him yet. Mr. Dorado?
Here.
Mr. Husser?
Here.
Chief Kudrick?
Here.
Mr. Leggio has been excused. Mr. Nacastro?
Here.
Councilwoman Richmond has been excused. Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Ms. Casper? Hold on, she is in the audience. Let me let her into the meeting. Ms. Casper?
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Cristiano has been excused and Chairman Tannenhouse.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Okay, we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for all of our first responders and those serving both here and abroad. All right, Chief, let's get going.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, thank you. Eileen, approval of minutes, please.
The minutes were for the special meeting August 31st, 2021. And I apologize, I don't think I sent them out with the agenda. So I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look them over or not. If they have, you can take a motion. If not, we can put it on the next meeting.
I know I took a look at them. What about the... Mr. Husser?
Yes, I did.
Ms. Casper? And I think that's it.
Up, yes.
Okay. All right, then we'll... Eligible voters, I'll take a motion for approval of the minutes, August 31st, 2021.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Who seconds it?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse? Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, vouchers?
I have no vouchers this evening.
Correspondents?
I don't really have any correspondence, but the second application on the agenda for Pioneer at Howell needs to be rescheduled. There was a problem with their notice. So if you just want to make a map... An announcement for members of the public that that will be rescheduled with a new date and a new notice. We will not be hearing that tonight.
Okay, Mr. Cuchero, want to unmute yourself, please?
Hey, Mr. Chairman. So Eileen, it's Pioneer?
Pioneer at Howell.
Okay, the application of Pioneer Hal LLC, case number 10... Is that 87, Eileen?
37. 37.
Will be rescheduled. We don't have a date right now, but we're not carrying the notice. There's going to be a renotice. So there'll be a renotice sent out to property owners, a new notice in the newspaper and that'll have the date and time of the new hearing.
Thank you. Correspondents?
Thank you. That's all I have.
Resolution?
There's two resolutions. The first one is for SP 1092 dime nine, resolution granting submission waivers. The eligible voters are Mr. Husser, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Nacastro, Ms. Casper and yourself.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution case number SP-1092 dime nine LLC.
Who's second it?
Second, Brian.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized.
Next resolution, please.
The next one is for case number SP 1058A, New Jersey Natural Gas Company. It's a resolution granting submission waivers. Eligible voters are Mr. Husser, Chief Kudrick, Mr. Nacastro, Ms. Casper and Chairman Tannenhouse.
Thank you. I'm entertaining a motion.
I'll make a motion to memorialize. Second, second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Before we get to the submission waivers, do we want to talk about the reorganization of the applications in front of us tonight?
That would be fine.
Okay. Mr. Chairman? Do you want to make... Do you want to announce or do you want me to? I think I'll summarize real quick and if I miss anything, you can fill in. So due to the length of the time I think we're going to need on the application, we're going to move case number SP-1058A, New Jersey Natural Gas Company to be our first application to hear tonight. Then we're going to move on to case number SD-2997, Larrabee Realty, and then we'll finish up tonight with case number SD-2990FP Howell. Did I miss anything? Mr. Cuchero?
Nope.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good.
All right, let's get into the submission waivers. Case number SD-3000, John Kelly. Who's counsel for this?
That is Mr. Pape. Mr... I'll give him a minute. I'm not sure who else he needs.
Good evening.
Mr. Pape, do you need anyone else?
Bruce Jacob should be on. I don't know that we'll need him, but I think it's appropriate that he be let in.
Sure, thank you.
You want to get started, Mr. Pape, and then we'll let Ms. Newman summarize?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, good evening. Kenneth Pape, on behalf of John Kelly, your applicant. This is a three-lot subdivision. There's a list of waiver requests and with your permission, I would like to defer to Ms. Newman as to her recommendations, all of which are acceptable to the applicant.
Thank you. Ms. Newman?
Laura, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? I do. So, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, we have a September 16th, 2021 review letter. The submission waivers are outlined in item three on page four. Because this is a minor subdivision wherein no improvements are proposed at this time, it's just the creation of the lot. I take no exception to the granting of these waivers for the purposes of deeming the application complete.
Thank you. Mr. Pape, anything else you'd like to add?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Okay, if nobody else has any questions, I'll entertain a motion, please. Seeing no questions, I'll entertain a motion.
So I'm all...
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Chief. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dorado?
You're muted, Paul.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the first case up for us today is case number SP-1058A, New Jersey Natural Gas Company. Eileen, is Mr. Pape counselor for that?
No, it's Ms. Skidmore.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting for that, let me just swear in our witnesses. Do you swear or affirm? Testimony about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. I do.
Thank you.
Sherry?
You're muted.
I do.
Okay.
Ms. Skidmore, do you need anyone other than Brian DeCina and Brian Fitzpatrick?
I have court reporter Stephanie Ron. If you see her, I have a phone number for her if that helps.
I don't see... Oh, yes, I do see Stephanie. Okay, hold on one second then. She should be...
I see her.
I'm here. I was trying to get ahold of somebody. I was like sitting there and just going, I can hear everything, so it was fine.
Okay.
Um, Eileen, I also have Steve Roudasti. I don't intend to call him, but if there are questions that someone has, it's my architect.
Okay.
Okay.
Hey, Ms. Skidmore, please proceed.
Good evening, board members. Nancy Skidmore from the law firm of Connel Foley. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, New Jersey Natural Gas Company. We are here for a public hearing on our application for amended preliminary and final site plan approval for a previously approved 30,000 square foot training facility. As you might recall, preliminary and final site plan approval with waiver relief was granted by this board in August of 2019. You also might remember that this facility will be utilized for federally mandated operator qualification training of utility workers who work on public utility gas infrastructure as well as for emergency first responder training. The present application involves very minor modifications to the site, which is located in the SED zoning district. No new variances or design waivers are required for this amendment. The project has been under construction since about July of 2020 and is nearing completion at this point. As a matter of housekeeping, we did prepare, mail and publish a notice to property owners within 200 feet of the site and can, in accordance with the requirements of the MLUL, we did supply Ms. Rubana with affidavits of mailing a publication last week, I believe.
Ms. Skidmore, can we just ask our attorney if he feels that they were properly noticed?
Eileen took a look at it and found it to be acceptable, so we have jurisdiction.
Thank you. Please continue, Ms. Skidmore.
Thank you. I intend only offer one witness for testimony this evening. It's Mr. Brian DeCina, who is our expert site engineer from French and Pirlo Associates. He will be presenting these minor changes that we are proposing this evening. As I mentioned, I have Mr. Steve Roudasti, who is our expert architect from Presen Roudasti and Brian Fitzpatrick from New Jersey Natural Gas Company. I don't intend to call them as witnesses this evening. They're here only if the board has any questions that Mr. DeCina might need assistance with. I recognize the board has quite a full agenda this evening. I'm trying to keep this presentation very brief. If the board has any initial questions, I'm happy to answer those. Otherwise, I would call Mr. DeCina as my first.
No, I think you can call your witness, please, Ms. Skidmore.
Hey, Mr. DeCina, you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Brian DeCina. B-R-I-A-N, last name D-E-C-I-N-A.
Hey, Ms. Skidmore, can you qualify Mr. DeCina?
Absolutely. Mr. DeCina was qualified as an expert engineer in the past by this board, including for the prior approval in 2019. I'm happy to have him present his...
Well, it's a new, it's a new hearing, so let's qualify him again.
Absolutely. Mr. DeCina, can you provide the board with the benefit of your background of educational experience and work experience in the field of engineering?
Absolutely. Good evening. Brian DeCina of the firm French and Pirlo Associates. I have a bachelor of science civil engineering degree from Villanova University. I am currently employed at French and Pirlo Associates where I currently serve as the executive vice president and the manager of our land development site engineering group. Been with the firm for over 23 years. I am a professional licensed, professional engineer licensed in the state of New Jersey, Delaware and Pennsylvania. I have testified in front of this planning board and other planning boards, zoning boards throughout the state of New Jersey.
Thank you. We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeCina, I believe you have three exhibits that you're going to be sharing with the board this evening and they've been marked, they marked, Eileen, A9 through A11, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, I have three. I could share my screen if that's possible.
That is, you can go right ahead and they were marked.
Okay, Mr. DeCina, could you please locate the site for the board and then take them through the proposed changes this evening?
Or this is A9, Nancy?
This is A9. This is the cover sheet.
All right, so A9, this is our cover sheet, sheet one of 19 entitled cover sheet. The date of the plan is December 21st, 2018 and revised through July 6th of 2021. On the cover sheet, you can see our key map. As Mrs. Skidmore mentioned, the site is located in the SED zone. It's located on Fairford Road, which is running north and south on Page. The property is shaded in dark gray. It's approximately 17 acres and it's located just south of the intersection with Route 33 business. The project's currently in the construction. As Ms. Skidmore mentioned, and it's predominantly completed at this stage of the game and we are here for an amended site plan approval. The application of funding does not propose any change in use, does not propose any number of employees, change in number of employees, shifts, hours of op... ...or design waivers.
Mr. DeCina, you just went out for a little bit of your last sentence. Could you just repeat that?
Yeah, absolutely. The amended application of funding does not propose any change in use, number of employees, any shifts, hours of operation, and in addition, does not create or require any new variances or design waivers. Did that come through, Kieran?
It did. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. So that is the site and where it's located in relationship to some of the major roadways. Exhibit A10, just for reference, is the approved landscape sheet that was presented in 2019 at our previous hearing. The only difference here is it's colored. It was known as sheet eight of 17. In that set, it was called the landscape plan with the date of 12/21/2018 and it was revised at that point through May 3rd of 2019. And again, this just shows the proposed development that was approved. It was a two-story 30,000 square foot training facility with visitor and employee parking up front and Safety Town Village, Training Village in the rear of the building with our stormwater management detention basin just beyond that. So this kind of gives you an idea of what was approved, just for point of reference. Moving forward, the reason we're here tonight is for some minor modifications to that site plan. This is exhibit A11. The title of this sheet is the amended site plan changes. It's sheet five of 17 of the submitted set. Again, the date of that sheet is December 21st, 2018 and it was revised through July 6th, 2021. On this sheet, you can see a variety of blue bubbles indicating those minor modifications that we are requesting approval tonight from the board. I will zoom in just to give you a better view of some of them. I'm going to work from the front entrance off of Fairford Road into the property to kind of go through each of them. There is approval received. Approval for the eight-foot-high security chain link fence to be installed around the entire perimeter. The only access to and from the site was through a drive aisle, one way in, one way out, operated by a mechanical sliding gate. It was determined by NJNG that they requested a four-foot wide man gate for emergency egress purposes. And that first bubble you see here is location of the four-foot-wide man gate that would be used for egress out of the site in case of emergencies. And that would be located just to the north of the existing, what's called the existing side access at this point. The second change to the perimeter fence is to the rear, where I mentioned earlier, our stormwater management detention basin is located. There is a maintenance access driveway. Our previous plans did not illustrate a double swing gate for those vehicles to come out of that facility and maintain that basin. So we're asking for a double swing gate for maintenance purposes only. So those are the two modifications to the perimeter security fence around the property. Moving into the site, you can see in the center in dark brown outline is that two-story 30,000 square foot training facility. The original plans call for all roof leaders to be directed under the slab out under the sidewalk into our proposed stormwater management system connecting directly. And there were, there were three or four of them that were, that were to occur. During construction, the contractor decided that it was a better solution to connect all of them underground into one main roof collection pipe as opposed to three or four separate connections. And what we're showing just to the south of the building face is that main roof of their connection pipe connecting to that same exact system that was previously approved, but just at a different location. So again, it's going to the same system, no increase in runoff. So as we move a little further back in the site, as I mentioned earlier, is an area called Safety Town. Safety Town is a training, outdoor training area where, as Mrs. Skidmore mentioned, it is for NJNG employees and first responders to come train in various different types of situations. It's a small replica scale of the everyday world. There's training sheds scattered throughout. You know, each representing a different situation, different type of structure, whether it be a house, a townhouse. And up front here in the first island, there are two areas that were previously approved. One was a confined space vault training area consisting of concrete vaults that are about three feet deep in the ground. They're open vaults. Allows the trainees to go into these vaults and perform various repairs in that training scenario as well as just to the south of it is an open pipe trench training area where they would also be doing training. Again, these are only about three feet deep. They were exposed to the weather elements. It was requested by the gas company to provide some sort of shelter. So these, these areas could be used year-round, whether it be from the direct sun, whether it be rain or snow. So what the applicant is proposing is two open-air pavilions, as you can see in the dash lines around these two structures or these two structures that are at surface grade, which would provide that, that screen. These canopies will measure approximately 45 feet wide by 56 foot long. And you can see them here in the dash lines. Staying with that same open-air pavilion theme, just to the north, the previously approved plan was our grasspaver parking area for some truck maneuvering, training area. It's, it's constructed of a grasspaver, a plastic grasspaver where it's actually seeded and lawned. But again, you could drive over it and they will perform their truck training maneuvers in here. They're proposing another open-air pavilion in this grasspaver area for staging of their employees as they wait for training within this, this grasspaver area or other areas in the back. So that was a little bit smaller. So it was the third one we're asking for and that was 30 feet wide by 59 feet long. From the previous plan, there was an area that we illustrated for an underground water storage tank to be installed underground within the grasspaver area. That was a holding tank for the fire suppression system that was to be used for the two-story building. If you recall, this property does not have potable public water or public sewer. It is serviced by an onsite well, which has been installed and that underground water storage tank was as a reserve to hold the required water volume that would be needed to provide water service to that building on the case of a fire emergency. That has since been relocated to the rear, as you can see in this blue bubble here and that dash line. It's a much smaller footprint. That size now is about 10 foot by 52 feet. Again, just for scale, it's shown there. It's on the ground. And that is a 30,000 gallon water storage tank. The fire pump equipment was originally proposed within the building to be installed within the mechanical room. When the fire suppression engineer designed the pumps and realized the size of it, the pump, the mechanical room was, was a little small, you know, for the equipment, he can get it in, but the concern was if that ever needed to be serviced, ever need to be replaced, to remove that pump would require a significant removal of walls and the second floor flooring system due to ceiling heights. So it was determined that that fire pump would not be located within the building and the applicant is proposing a separate shed outside just above, sitting on top of the underground water storage tank, as you can see here in the dark black line. And that pump house structure is 11 foot wide by 16 foot long. It's 11 and a half feet tall. On my plan, I mentioned incorrect dimension. I can just clarify that here. I had the pump houses 10 by 52. That's actually the dimension of the water storage tank, as I mentioned earlier. The pump house is, is an 11 by 16 foot long. Stay in that same area. The applicant is also requesting to install an eight-foot-high freestanding masonry wall, as you can see here in the dark black solid line. That wall is proposed for screening. There were some landscaping in here. It's for screening from any visual that may occur from people coming up and down, feel of a road. Again, it's freestanding walls, not holding any earth back. There's no drainage impacts here. There was about eight or nine trees that were under proposed landscape plan that were within this area. They have been relocated within the landscape burn requirement area here with the 50-foot landscape buffer we had to have. We supplemented those plants in this area. So they're not removed from the plan, they're relocated. So there's no loss of proposed vegetation, vegetation. And moving further back into Safety Town, as I mentioned, there are about 12 training sheds scattered throughout Safety Town, none of which included a wood deck. The gas company realized that, you know, that's something that most houses have and, you know, in order to provide that specific training for their employees and first responders, they requested that we show a wood deck on one of the sheds to provide that scenario in their training yard where they would be able to go underneath and access either a gas meter or a valve that might be hard to locate and service. So that is another, one of the modifications you can see here is a small wood porch slash deck on one of the sheds. And the last request is the installation of seven faux storm inlet and manhole structures. When I say faux, they're, they're not functional. They're, they look like your standard, you know, curb inlets that you would see on any street, in any storm manholes that you would see in any roadway. But they have no functionality. The purpose of those is for the gas companies, employees and the first responders to use as training. Anytime there's a gas leak, they are required to check these structures to see if there's any gas trapped within these structures as well. There'll be no utilities connected to them, no pipes connected to them. They will be a shallow structure. They will have an open bottom filled with stone, so any ponding water that may come in there would actually be able to perk back into the ground. Again, they're faux. They're not part of the storm system or the sanitary sewer system. So those are all the changes that we are requesting tonight. The one last thing up in the corner here next to the grasspaver area is our refuse trash enclosure building that was trash enclosure area that was approved previously. And one of the comments in the professional review letter was to, they recommended that this be a masonry block enclosure. As Mrs. Skidmore mentioned, that this... As Mrs. Skidmore mentioned, that this project has received approval and we're under construction and predominantly complete. Our plans originally showed and always showed a board-on-board fence enclosure within this area. And while I recognize that there are benefits to the modular block wall enclosure, this is a private site, as we mentioned earlier. It is fully secured and gated. There's no public access. It's strictly for training purposes and a training facility for the utility company. The amount of refuse that would be generated for a, a training center is not similar to that you would see at a, a standard commercial site with with a number of tenants and/or be accessed by the public on the weekends to, to dump their trash in. And, and again, this, the location of this is, is fairly far off from Fairford Road, it's approximately three hundred and fifty feet from the Fairford Road right away. So plenty of distance away, if it was in terms of screening, our landscape plan, as you can see, back to A-ten has the required landscaping around it. So from a visual standpoint, there is enough screening around that as well. So we are requesting that that remain as a board-on-board enclosure for the recycling and refuse area.
And Brian, just to clarify there, the ordinance permits the use of board-and-board fencing. Is that right?
Yes, I do. It's, I believe it's section one eighty-eight dash thirty-two, section three point six.
Okay, Brian, I have just a couple quick questions. Thank you for that recitation of these amendments that we're proposing. In connection with the prior approval of the project, we were previously granted eight design waivers. Could you just briefly identify what the waivers were?
Yes, under the prior approval, there were eight design waivers. Again, as I mentioned earlier, nothing new on this application. The ones previously granted, requested and granted, the first one was lighting intensity. The requirement for the township was that, I believe it's a requirement of point-three-foot candles minimum anywhere on the project. And my testimony back then was, you know, we were not proposing to light any grass areas. So those areas were not meeting the point-three. There's no reason to light up the, the grass areas. Only the areas that were either parking lots or pedestrian access only, such as your parking areas, walkways, and around the building. So those those areas did receive a minimum of three, point-three-foot candles, but we did not meet it along the grass areas to, to prevent any, like spillage on neighboring properties or feel for road the right, right away. The second is Woodlands Management Requirement. There's a, you know, for the amount of trees that were proposed, that were proposed to be removed on the original application, there was replacement value. As you can see on the, on the plans here, there's limited area for replacement. We proposed with the quantity number of trees, there was a certain number of quantity. And the ones that we could not meet in terms of the requirement, we, the applicant actually paid a contribution back in May of twenty twenty. The third waiver was that the building should have a front entrance orientation. The entrance to the building is to the southwest corner on page here. The actual front door is actually facing south, but it does have front glass that would be your main entrance lobby area that does project towards Fairford Road. The other one was publicly usable site furnishings. Again, this is a private facility. It's not, we're not entertaining any public from, from in and out because again, it's, it's strictly used for the gas company, as I mentioned earlier, with the foot-high perimeter gate and fencing around. So again, having publicly, publicly used site furnishings such as bike racks were not proposed, and that waiver was granted. Similar to the public and private sidewalks connections. There are sidewalks internally, but there is no connection to Fairford Road. Fairford does not have any sidewalks. Currently, there is no connection proposed from the thirty thousand square foot building to Fairford Road. And in addition, the applicant did make a sidewalk voluntary contribution in May twenty twenty for the length of frontage that the site does front on Fairford Road. The other one is roofline offsets for the building. Offset shall occur at seventy-five feet. That testimony was provided that the offsets were a little bit greater than seventy-five feet, went down an offset. And that waiver was granted also. And two more, vertical window orientation on the building. Vertical windows were provided in addition to horizontal windows, which permits airflow and light, and that was also granted. And the last one was number of signs. We were, we requested and received approval for a monument site dedication sign just north of our site access, you can see on exhibit A-11. The title project dedication sign. And there were two building-mounted signs also that were approved. So those were the previously requested and granted design waivers. And again, as I mentioned in my opening statement, there is no additional design waivers or variance requests under this amendment.
Mr. De Sina, just a quick correction there. As to the number of signs, one permitted, but four were approved. Is that right? I think you just mentioned only three. There's a monument sign. There were two address number signs and then another wall sign. Is that correct?
I, I, yeah, I just saw, yes, you're right.
Yeah, absolutely. In your opinion, do any of these proposed minor modifications have any impact whatsoever on the characteristics or, or use of the site that were presented to the board back in two thousand nineteen in support of the waivers?
Absolutely not. I think they actually enhance, you know, you know, the operations and they provide a, a better scenario for, you know, the gas company and its fresh responders.
Okay. And, and I think you mentioned earlier, just to confirm in your opinion, are there any additional design waivers or variances required in connection with this amendment?
There are none.
Okay. I have no more questions for Mr. De Sina.
Okay, thank you. Does that conclude your testimony?
That concludes our testimony unless the board has any questions that either Mr. De Sina has to answer or certainly I have other, two other representatives here, but again, I think Mr. De Sina could probably cover mostly everything.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? I mean, I'm sorry, Ron.
Just, just to be clear, Mr. De Sina, the intensity of the non-compliance of the original grant of the design waivers, it's not being intensified. It's the exact same non-compliant condition that was previously granted relief.
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, looks like, looks like New Jersey Natural Gas is leaving no stones unturned in training people. So does anybody have any other questions?
Mr. Chair, if I may. Good evening, Brian.
Good evening.
Two questions. The proposed well, is that going to be used just for fire training, or is that providing potable water to the facility as well?
That is providing potable water to the facility.
Is there any concern with a proposed well in close proximity to the training fire pit?
No, I, I know that just these circles look fairly large. That's the clear zone. The fire pit is, is relatively small, the fire source. I believe it's like fifty feet or forty, yeah, it's at least fifty feet away. And they received approval from the Health Department in terms of location.
Okay, and is, is it just going to be water used for the training to put out the fires? Or I guess my concern here is, as we all know, with the PFOS and the firefighting foams, can if the board were, were to grant approval, can this be a PFOS fee, free foam if foam was used on this site and water only?
Mr. Huster, I, I do have a representative from New Jersey Natural Gas. I, I can, I can just make the statement on the record if you'd like. I know we provided testimony on this during the hearing, hearing in August, two thousand nineteen. I think you may have been unavailable that night, but this is this is not foam, it's powder, it's ABC powder, it's non-toxic, non-hazardous. We did provide a OSHA safety data sheet on that that confirms the same. Certainly, I don't, I don't have my environmental scientist here tonight because I know we covered this issue during the last hearing. But I'd be happy to supply you with that safety data sheet again, if that's something you'd like to review.
Yeah, just on the record. That'd be great. Thank you.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Are there other questions? Okay, Ms. Skidmore, I guess we have to open it up to the public, right, Ron? Okay. Well, we'll go ahead and open it up to the public, Eileen, and you please just explain to the public how to raise their hand. And as usual, we'll wait about a minute, minute and a half.
The chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public. If anyone has any questions or comments on the New Jersey Natural Gas application, please use the raise your hand feature. If you're calling in, remember you need to use star nine to raise and lower your hand, star six to mute and unmute yourself. We'll give it about a minute. And then we will bring someone in if there's anyone there. If not, we'll close public. I do have someone with their hand up.
Okay, thank you.
Hello? Can everyone hear me?
Yeah, sir, just before you, just before you get started, let me swear you in. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board? It's the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Michael Docasal.
And your address, sir?
Sixty-four Danilo Way, Howell, New Jersey.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I have a question about the facility itself. Does this facility is it currently in progress, or is it, is it currently being planned on, or is there actual construction into the work?
I, I don't know if Mr. De Sina wants to address that, but I can address that. Construction has started on this facility in, in summer of last year, about July of two thousand twenty, and it's nearing completion.
And I'll, and I'll confirm that as well.
All right, thank you.
Sir, is that all?
Yes, that's all.
Do you have any, do you want to make any statement about the application, or you just had the one question?
No, I just had the one question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Anybody else have their hands raised?
Anyone else needing to ask questions or comments on this application? Please use the raise your hand feature before the chairman closes the public hearing. I'm not seeing anyone with their hand raised.
Okay, we'll close the public portion. Ms. Skidmore, would you like to summarize?
Yes, indeed. Thank you very much for your time this evening, board members. I know you have a heavy schedule ahead of you. I'm not going to take much, too much more of it. We respectfully request your approval of these modifications to this project and are looking forward to opening up.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve case number SP one zero five eight A, New Jersey Natural Gas for amended preliminary and final major site plan.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Who was that? That's Rob Seaman?
Yes, Mr. Seaman.
Thank you. Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Huster?
Yes, Brian, good presentation.
Thank you.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes, yes, very nice job, sir.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhaus?
Yes.
Bush and Carries?
Thank you very much.
Have a good night, guys. Thank you.
Everyone, have a good night. Okay, next case is FD dash two nine nine seven, Larrabee Realty LLC.
Mr. Pape is the attorney for that application.
Mr. Pape? Peter Strong, please.
And that's it?
I believe so. Mr. Feldman is our applicant, but I, I don't know that he's on.
I don't see anybody.
And there was another family member, Bauer, B.A.U.E.R. I don't think he's on either.
No, I don't see them on there.
So Peter Strong and I are prepared to present this application to the board.
And I moved Peter in. Okay.
There you are. There you go. Mr. Chairman, may we begin?
Yes, please.
Thank you. This is a two-lot subdivision. It's classified as a major subdivision because once before in nineteen seventy-three and again in nineteen ninety, there was subdivision activity that involved this property. And as a result, although it's a simple two-lot subdivision, it is classified as a major. Before we begin our substantive presentation, I would ask if you could confirm on the record receipt of our notices and that the board has taken jurisdiction.
Mr. Cuchero?
Eileen, look to make sure that everyone on the two-hundred-foot radius list was noticed, and it appears that notice is proper. Board has jurisdiction.
Thank you, Mr. Cuchero. This is a two-lot, a request to create two lots. Each of the lots is conforming. In fact, each of the lots is slightly larger than required in the zone. Variance relief is requested on a temporary basis because there is a single-family residence on the property that will be removed from the property, but at the time that the subdivision is created, it will be present. You'll hear Mr. Strong describe the request. And what we're going to ask this board to consider is this conforming subdivision with a temporary bulk variance relief with an understanding that when the, a new home is built on the vacant lot, that there'll be no certificate of occupancy issued for that home unless the property, the house on the site has been properly removed. Mr. Strong could be sworn in. We'll share the board, with the board his credentials and go right to the substantive presentation.
You swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Peter W. Strong, S.T.R.O.N.G. with Crest Engineering.
Mr. Strong, please take a few moments to share your credentials, both education and professional with the board.
Sure. Nineteen seventy-one graduate of what was then Newark College of Engineering, now New Jersey Institute of Technology, with a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering. I received my professional engineering license from the state of New Jersey in nineteen seventy-five. My professional planning license in nineteen seventy-eight. Worked for several firms in the central Jersey area for the first ten years that I was out of college and started Crest Engineering in nineteen eighty-one, which continues today. I also have a professional engineering license in the state of Florida. I used to have one in Pennsylvania, but I gave that up voluntarily. And I've testified before this board, as well as numerous other boards in the state of New Jersey, central New Jersey especially for the last fifty years.
We'll accept your credentials, Mr. Strong.
Mr. Strong, just for the record, your, your licenses are all current and in good standing in New Jersey?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Do you have an exhibit that you can share, or do you, would you want Ms. Robano to place the exhibit on the screen?
Let me see if I can do this.
And Mr. Strong, these would be exhibits that were already provided to Ms. Robano?
Mr. Strong?
This is the, the cover sheet of the set of plans that we submitted.
That was submitted with the application?
Yes.
Okay.
Which shows the area that the property is located in. Set the south-central portion of Howell to the east of Route Nine and to the west of Route five forty-seven along Larrabee Boulevard. The let's see. The property, property is located in the R-two zone. And as Mr. Pape has indicated, it is one-acre piece of property which currently has an existing residence in the southeast corner of the property. It's been there for since the nineteen seventies, I believe. It's been there forty to fifty years all by itself. Some vacancy around the, the existing building and the rear portion is lightly wooded to the north and west of this existing residence. This is the proposed This is the proposed, um, minor subdivision, uh, as submitted. Again, this is bigger scale, so you can see the, uh, the existing house on the property. The proposed subdivision line, uh, two acre, two, uh, lots that are approximately half an acre apiece, uh, roughly equal in area. I want to point out that the, uh, the, uh, existing house with the proposed subdivision line is only seventeen point eight feet instead of twenty feet as required by the zone from the, the new proposed subdivision line, but we can't move that line over any farther because that would make a new lot, uh, less than a hundred feet wide, uh, which is the reason why we're asking for the temporary, uh, variance or, uh, two point two feet, uh, setback on the westerly side of the existing house.
For purposes of clarity, that variance is requested. And the applicant agrees that prior to securing a certificate of occupancy for a house on proposed lot eleven point zero four two, that home will be removed properly with all the necessary permits. And any new home constructed would require no further variance relief. Mr. Strong, did I recite that accurately?
That's correct.
Going to ask if you could describe, I note that the county planning board has issued an exemption letter for this and that you've secured a letter from the health department confirming that onsite septic systems can be installed on the property.
That's correct.
And the town has, the, the professional reports point out that there's no sidewalk shown on the plan. It's my understanding that there are no sidewalks on Larrabee Boulevard. Could you confirm that?
That is correct. Yes, there are no sidewalks, uh, on either side of the road and, uh, anywhere near this, uh, this property, um, along Larrabee Boulevard.
It's also my understanding that there's an existing stormwater collection system that runs, uh, parallel to Larrabee Boulevard. Uh, and could you briefly describe that, that system?
Yes, uh, there, uh, there currently exists on, on both sides of the roadway, uh, roadside drainage swales, which, uh, take, take the stormwater runoff, uh, from the roadway as well as adjoining properties on both sides and, uh, direct it ultimately to, uh, to the, uh, to the, uh, east. Uh, and there is a drainage system that was put in by the township, uh, several years ago, uh, along Larrabee Boulevard in certain places, which includes to the, uh, just to the east of this site. Um, but for the most part, um, drainage along this area is provided by open drainage swales and has been for many years.
And we intend to leave that system in place, and we're requesting relief from the requirement of installing sidewalks.
Yes, except for the, uh, crossing of the, uh, the driveway to get from, uh, uh, the house, the new house to the, to the roadway, um, where they would, we would put a pipe in there, uh, the rest of the, uh, drainage system would remain in place and therefore, uh, constructing sidewalks would be somewhat difficult, uh, and certainly putting in, uh, curving and or, um, uh, additional pavement in that area would, uh, would be, uh, problematic.
Mr. Strong, it's my recollection, I, this isn't the first time we've worked on Larrabee Boulevard. It's my recollection that some three years ago that Larrabee Boulevard was, was resurfaced and so, um, um, the township, uh, it was township project to resurface Larrabee in this, in this area. Is that accurate?
That's, that's true, yes.
So the, the roadway has been recently resurfaced without curbs or sidewalks and retaining the drainage system that you're describing.
That's correct.
You also have on the plan, I believe, supplemental stormwater management proposed in the form of dry wells. If you could take us through that proposal.
Yes, um, for the, uh, the proposed new dwelling, um, we would obviously be creating some additional impervious surfaces. And for, for both lots, um, we would be providing, um, underground dry wells that would be sized to take the, uh, additional runoff from the impervious surface to be created to mitigate the effects of additional stormwater runoff to adjoining properties.
There are recommendations from the tet board professionals with regard to driveways. One is that the existing driveway will be too close to the property line. And would you confirm that a note will be added to the plan that the new driveways will be a minimum of five feet from any property line?
Yes, we can provide that, yes.
And the use of a stone driveway is not, is not provided for in the ordinance. The, uh, requirement is for a paved or concrete driveway. Please confirm that the applicant will add that note to the plans for the, uh, both residences to be constructed on the property.
Yes, we will.
Mr. Chair and board members, I have nothing further of Mr. Strong. This is.
Can I just ask, what do you mean by a note will be added to the plan? A note will be added to the plan to say what?
Oh, the, the, one note will state that the, no driveway installed will be closer than five feet to the property line.
Oh, that I got.
And the driveways, when installed, will be paved driveways and not stone.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to be clear. I have nothing further of Mr. Strong. It is a two lot subdivision without permanent variances. And with the, uh, a request that we be permitted to leave that residence there for the time that our client perfects the subdivision and, and constructs a home on the new property. And thereafter must remove it before securing a certificate of occupancy.
Mr. Pape?
Yes, sir.
Is there any, uh, rough estimate as to the amount of time your client anticipates that process taking?
We have reviewed that with our client, and I believe it's in the six to twelve months. Uh, the, the number one concern of all, this is a father and son-in-law, uh, who are doing the subdivision. And the number one concern of all at this time is the construction costs. They're looking for the construction costs to stabilize and then to go forward. So I would, I would say twelve months is, is more than enough.
Mr. Cuchero, what, what does, what does legally this open the board up to? I mean, is this something that should be recorded in the deed? So it doesn't get missed in the future?
Uh, there, there is a case that does talk about conditions that are not recorded. And whether they are, whether they can be enforced or not, that particular case encourages boards where they feel very strongly about certain conditions that the resolution be recorded. Mr. Pape, do you have any objection to the resolution being recorded?
No, I think that recording the resolution as a, as a covenant would be, would be a good idea.
Okay.
For all involved.
So that's what we'll do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
All right. Does any of the board members have any comments? Do any of our professionals wish to make any statements?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I would ask is we have a series of technical comments, um, contained in item seven of our review letter. Mr. Strong, do you agree to comply with those?
Yes, as we corresponded today, uh, yes, we agreed to, uh, uh, the item seven A through M, N, I think it is on your, your letter. Yes, we would, uh, agree to those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anything, Mr. Chair.
Okay, that's it. All right, I guess we'll open it up to the public.
At this time, the chairman has opened the hearing up for members of the public. If anyone has any questions or comments on Larrabee Realty LLC for a two lot minor subdivision, please use the raise your hand feature. Again, you need to use star nine to raise or lower your hand and star six to mute or unmute yourself if you're calling in. We'll give everyone about a minute to raise their hand and bring you into the meeting. I am not seeing any raised hands.
Okay, we'll close the public portion. Anybody from the board have any last questions? Seeing none. Mr. Pape?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Come rise, please.
Uh, very succinctly, two lot subdivision. Each lot oversized, um, consistent, actually larger than most of the, the lots on the street, as you can see from the plan. Um, we respectfully ask that the board consider the relief favorably.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if no one has any last questions, I'll entertain a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve case number SD dash two nine nine seven, Larrabee Realty LLC with agreed upon, uh, stipulations in the resolution.
Do I have a second?
Second. Second emotion.
Thank you, Ms. Casper. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dorado?
Yes.
Mr. Husser?
Yes.
Chief Kudrick?
Yes.
Mr. Nacastro?
Yes.
Mr. Seaman?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
And Chairman Tannenhouse?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you all.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Have a good evening.
You as well.
Before we get into our next, uh, application, I think we should take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
The board will now take a five-minute recess. They'll be back at eight oh six. The planning board will now reconvene.
Thank you, Eileen. Our next application is SD number, S, sorry, case number SD dash two nine nine zero, FP Howell LLC. Eligible voters are Mr. Dorado, Mr. Husser, Mr. Kudrick, Mr. Nacastro, and myself. Has anybody else read the tapes to be able to vote on this application?
I, I read the entire transcript today.
Thank you, Mr. Seaman. Ms. Casper?
That is Mr. Pape's case.
Thank you. Mr. Are we ready?
For the records, could you please note that Ms. Casper has, has not reviewed the tapes and is eligible to vote?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Pape.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals, good evening all. This is the second public hearing of FP Howell. The end of August, we, uh, spent most of the evening with the board. In fact, the board was courteous, courteous and allowed the applicant and the public to participate all the way to after ten thirty before concluding the hearing. Um, as the record will reflect, we came close to completing the presentation, but we are returning to tonight for, um, further presentation of exhibits and testimony to the board. The, when we were before the board i- in August, there was some questions about landscaping. Um, the applicant and Ms. Spiro, um, met only this Monday on the property. Uh, during that meeting, a landscaping scheme was developed and an exhibit has been created that was filed within the forty-eight hour requirement that we'll present to the board this evening. It's, I do recognize that an exhibit that was generated within the last forty-eight hours may not be thoroughly reviewed and vetted by your professionals, but we are prepared to present it as a, as the exhibit that was created in response to the requests that were made to the applicant. Also, when we were here last month, there was one set of variances that we were somewhat stumped by. And that was, the, there was one of the cul-de-sacs got a little too close to the environmental constraints. Mr. Challoner was able to rework so that, that cul-de-sac so that there are now no variances associated with the cul-de-sac. And in fact, Mr. Chair and board members, there are no variances on this application. There is a single waiver, and we'll discuss that with you. And that is the complexity of trying to address all of the lighting requirements. Sometimes when you address one half of the lighting requirement, you put the other half in violation. And we have, I think, one parking area where we do not have one hundred percent compliance. And Mr. Challenger will, will take you, take us through that. Um, Mr. Mr. Nick Vetterisi is here. He is also, he, he did not testify at the last meeting. He will present the traffic elements of the plan. We do have the representatives of the, uh, architects available this evening. I did not intend to call them, Mr. Chair, board members, unless that is the pleasure of the board. So with your permission, I would like to recall, Mr. Challoner, remind him that he is under oath, remind the board that he was qualified as an engineer and as a planner, and ask if we could begin the substantive presentation.
Please do.
Thank you. Mr. Challoner. Oh, the people who, who need to be in are, and I, I think I jumped, it's Stuart Challoner and okay, and Nick Vetteris of the applicant to Scott Caruso. I would like him to be in, please. Is our court reporter Angela Bonjuano in?
I moved Angela, yes.
I see, I see it, okay. Um, there are, there are other representatives available, but I do not need to call them at this time.
Okay, I think we have everyone.
I, I do, I do too, thank you. Mr. Challoner, I remind you, you're under oath that, and remind you that you've been qualified as an engineer and planner. I'm going to ask if you could briefly describe the additional work that has been done on the plans, and then if you would present the plans.
Uh, sure, absolutely. Can I share my screen, Eileen? Is that, am I available?
Yes, you can.
Okay. I need a team. So the, one of the waivers, um, that was, uh, identified last, last month was the end of South Sterling Drive. There was, oops, oh, God. I came home without my mouse. On the end of South Sterling Drive, there was, uh, two, two condominium, uh, uh, buildings on the southern section of the, of the roadway. There was a four-unit building and a three-unit building, and the three-unit building extended into the three hundred foot riparian, um, buffer. Uh, it was identified, so we approached the developer to see if they can, uh, change the two separate buildings and into one seven-unit building, uh, which they did, which allowed us to pull the, the improvements back twenty-five feet to get it out of the three hundred foot riparian buffer. So now there's no proposed buildings that encroach into the three hundred foot buffer. Um, the secondary change was the board asked the applicant to address with the lighting. Uh, we redid the lighting plan, uh, we put the cobra heads in that were, that the board indicated they preferred. So we, the entire project got redesigned with the cobra heads. Um, we provided a half a foot candle minimum for the parking areas within the coed development. Um, and we tried to reduce the intensity in the, uh, the streets to have a, um, an average of somewhere near point four foot candles, and I think the, the average came in to point four four. There is some areas, uh, along the roadways, uh, that are guest parking that did not meet the half a foot candle. Uh, and I indicated to the, uh, to CME that our office will relocate some of those light fixtures uh, to achieve the light, the half a foot candles within the parking areas, uh, along the, along the side streets. Uh, but we will, uh, maintain that, uh, point four four, point four, uh, foot candle average throughout the property. So we comply with the township. I think the, um, uh, I'm trying to think what the, what the, uh, third revision, uh, was.
We're going to talk about.
Yeah, the landscaping. So on, uh, uh, Sherry was kind enough to meet with us out on the field on this past Monday, uh, we walked the property and we identified, yes.
If, if I could just stop you for a second, before we get off the lighting topic, can we just ask our professionals if they concur that the, the lighting plan is appropriate and meets our requirements?
Sure.
Um, unless I, unless I had looked at it, it, it did show that average as they had said, the point four four. Um, so I had just, like, um, like Mr. Challoner said, I had asked him if he could just play around with the lights a little bit, just to try and get closer to point five in those areas of guest parking. And, um, you know, and I, I did ask if they could reduce the, um, lighting in the parking lot just to get closer down to the point five. It was pretty bright over there. So, so they, they did a. just to get closer down to the point five. It was pretty bright over there. So, so they, they did agree that they would work on the lighting a little bit.
And you, in your opinion, you feel the, the lighting is adequate for security reasons and so forth, and meets, meets what would be appropriate for residential area?
With those changes, yes. So I, I haven't seen those changes yet, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
I, I just have a question. These are future changes? They're not depicted, or?
They're not finalized yet, no. He's, he still agreed that he would change table.
Yeah, these, those revisions that are before the board tonight, and there's a request for further revisions in those areas of the, the guest parking.
Right, after the last meeting, we had, we sat down, we made the revisions to the roadway and revised the lighting scheme for the entire property to put in the cobra heads, redesigned the entire lighting system. That was submitted fourteen days prior to the hearing. And then when we got the review letter September twenty eighth indicating that, although it was much improved, there were still some areas of guest parking along the street that they liked that, which would allow, which would require us to move a light fixture maybe ten or fifteen feet closer to the guest parking to just lighten up those areas. And we agreed that we would do that, but I would never have been able to meet the fourteen day deadline to get it back in front of the board for another review, so. So those are revisions that were identified in the September twenty eighth review letter.
So that's what I'm trying to get towards, which is, you know, rather than just saying we'll work on it, you know, there, there should be something more substantive. So you're saying that the location of the lights are going to be moved ten to fifteen feet?
That's correct. There's the, the intensity on the, on the, we were changed, we lowered the intensity of the, of the entire property. So now it's point four four, where the minimum is point four. However, they identified some of the parking areas are under point three, and we'd like to see that closer to point five. So, and it's just the parking areas along the roadways, not the parking areas for the, for the general parking of the COA units where they have all exterior parking along the roadways where we put additional parking in for guests for the condos. Those areas, those light fixtures will get adjusted ten or fifteen feet. There's a light fixture every, like every seventy-five feet, so it'll be adjusted slightly to get more intensity in the parking areas.
So you're asking for preliminary and final, which means that while the professionals may see it again, the board members won't. What, what is your estimate as to how close to, you said the point five is, is the goal? You're trying to get as close to that as possible?
That's correct.
How close do you think you can get?
Uh, in those, in those parking areas, I'll have a minimum point five foot candle for the guest parking. I will, I will meet that requirement.
It's a maximum of point five.
It, it's a maximum of an average, so the average is not going to change. What? So there's two different things. There's a minimum where, like a general parking lot for, for, let's say retail, you like to have point five minimum in all the spaces where people get in and out of their car. The average is for street lighting in a roadway. So here, we're meeting those, that average. I'm just going to move the light fixtures. So the light, we're not adding light fixtures, we're going to just relocate the light fixtures closer to the parking spaces, so those parking spaces will be lit brighter. It, this.
But you're still going to need a waiver, correct? Like, you're not going to be able to comply with the requirement.
I would, I would imagine that you're not going to meet a hundred percent with the minimum point, because it, it's very difficult to be able to have a point three foot candle everywhere, but an average of point five because of the guest parking and its streets. If this was just the residential road for the single family section, I don't have any guest parking on the streets. I didn't need, need to meet the point five for the guest parking. But here, there's guest parking, and it, and it's being reviewed as a roadway also.
Well, then what are, what, you testified as to where you thought you could comply. Why don't we focus in on where it is that you expect that you will not comply, and what the disparity is between what you're proposing and what's required?
So in the areas where the park, where the guest parking occurs, we'll comply with the point five to ensure that it's safe for guests to enter and exit during the, uh, after dusk, within those guest parking areas. I'll relocate the light fixtures to allow the point five minimum in those areas. It'll, it'll exceed the the, the average in those areas, but it'll, it'll take the light away from the, from the areas of the roadways. So the average will be close to the, to the township average. I think right now we're at point four four foot candles, average throughout the entire roadway system. So it's going to be similar to the point four four. So, am I?
Well, I would defer to the chairman who understands this better than anybody in the room as to whether that provides enough information so that you're satisfied that you understand what's being proposed.
Yeah. I, I don't know, Ron. I think that, that the board should, should see the final lighting plan. I think it's tough, tough to, to talk in hypotheticals here. If there's, there's issues and, and there's, there's, uh, differences, I think the board should be warranted the ability to look at those final book handle requirements. And such an important, and it's such an important neighborhood in a part of Howell that, you know, has a, a, a more farm-like character.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll come back to that, Mr. Challoner.
If I may, Mr. Challoner, before you take us over to landscaping, if you would confirm that as the design engineer, that it's your opinion that there are no other variances, there are no variances, and but for the one that we just described with regard to lighting, there are no design waivers.
And it's correct.
Okay. If you could take us through the landscaping exhibit that your firm created after meeting with Ms. Spiro on Monday. And I believe that it has been marked into evidence that I'm looking thirty-seven, Mrs. Robano?
I'm sorry, hold on one second.
And I'm looking, I'm scrambling.
Thirty-six is the landscape presentation.
Okay. Mr. Challoner, if you could take us through the landscaping plan and the purposes of the landscaping revisions.
So, uh, we went out to the site on Monday to walk the perimeter to look at the existing buffers. The exhibit that's in front of us is the, the, the green dots are the proposed landscaping that was proposed to supplement the existing buffers that are there today. We, we, along the southern portion of the property adjacent to the, I think it's Argument Farms, we're going to do a staggered row of evergreens along the entire, uh, adjoining property line. The stagger row will consist of Green Giants and Norway Spruce. There is a small area along Fort Plains Road that was a little thin, that we're proposing as some additional buffers. Along the north property line, there's a very substantial buffer there today. So we're just going to supplement our twenty-five foot buffer area that is being supplemented with, again, the Green Giants and Norway Spruce. And then closer to the wetlands in the back portion of the property, there was actually a void on the adjoining property of buffering trees. So we're going to do a full buffer of staggered row of evergreens and Norway Spruce along that entire row. And then the, along the eastern portion of the property, there is a vast wetland corridor that is heavily buffered already today. So that there was no additional need for buffering in that location. And then I also have a.
This hasn't been submitted, right? This is just an exhibit, like, it has not been formally submitted to.
That's correct.
Or CME. And like, I, I just have to say, like, this application was heard in August. It's October. I just don't understand. I, I, I'm disappointed that we have yet to see this. It, it's disappointing. I, I'm not, you know, and I, and I don't want you putting this on Sherry because you guys didn't reach out to her until Monday, so like, the fact that you waited all this time, and this is what we're seeing at the old power is disappointing. So I just want the board to know that I have not, this is the first I'm seeing this.
So, Chair, could you offer some advice?
So I just want to, you know, I'm not making any calls as to when anything should be, should be submitted or not, just, you know, what the consequences are of when you submit. So Jen has not seen it. I just want to know from Sherry and Laura, have you had an opportunity to review the plans or no?
I have not.
So, Mr. Chairman, there's certainly no bar from the applicant providing the testimony. You know, they, they have submitted the, the exhibit, section ten B of the municipal land use law permits it, but, you know, the board wants additional time for their professionals to review it. That's also reasonable. So I, I wouldn't tell the applicant not to continue. It's just, you know, the consequence of the timing is such that the board may determine that it wants additional time for the experts to review it. So my recommendation would be to allow Mr. Challoner to continue, but, you know, as you stated with the lighting, you know, you may, you may wish to have more time.
Fantastic, thank you. We'll take that under advisement. Mr. Challoner?
So, Mr. Page, do you want to put up the aerial, or is that something that we want to skip over?
I think that you're putting up the aerial. It's an exhibit that you created for a purpose, and I think it should be presented. Thank you.
All right. So we also, on Monday, just so the board had an opportunity to see what we were looking at when we walked the property, we prepared a, let me see if I can stop this. This is a aerial exhibit of the property. Currently, if the screen is available, is.
Yeah, I'm not seeing it, Mr. Challoner.
Okay, all right. Let me, yeah, all right, let me, uh, correct my screen here. Share. How about now?
Just, we just see your, your file structure. Maybe on the other screen. It's kind of tough. You may have to un, you may have to unshare your screen and then share the screen that has. It's not like some of the other online.
About now?
No.
Nope, no.
Shoot. Stop screen. All right, so I stopped, right? You don't see anything now?
No, we don't see anything.
Are we able to show it, Eileen?
Share.
If he tells me what number it is, I can share it.
Yeah, why don't you just identify what exhibit number it is, Eileen, and, and she can put it up? Nope. We have, we have a Fort Plain Road buffer picture.
That's it.
That's it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's it. Okay, good. All right, so this is an aerial that we took on, on Monday.
Hold on one second, because this was not presented to me.
Yes, it was. It, it was. It is the A, A V I exhibit.
I don't think I have.
It's there.
Well, let's let Eileen just confirm.
Yes. So, this, Stu, if we're allowed to present it, I think that would be a, a good idea. But if not, while we're waiting to see if Ms. Robano has it properly received, could you describe what you did when you were out there? What, what this video would, would show?
It, it is a video of, um, we, when we went to the site, we walked, we walked to, along the northern boundary, the, the joining property to the north. We walked along the wetland buffer line towards the south, and then we walked along the southern buffer line to the adjoining property to the, to the south, to Argument Farms. Just to demonstrate to the board the amount of buffering that is currently there today. That's been, that's in a conservation easement on the adjoining property. The buffer to the south is on our property line, it's on the common property line. And all the trees along the existing buffers are, are, are to remain. We just wanted to show the, the amount of buffering that's currently on the property today, and I think the aerial photograph does that. The, the flyover. And it, and it was submitted with the landscaping exhibit.
Well, even if it, even if it wasn't, Mr. Castro, it, it, it's probably likely that at least the landscape part of the, of the application will have to be properly reviewed and vetted and discussed at, at, at another meeting. Is there any harm having Mr. Challoner present what he has today?
No, I, I, as I said before, the, the only issue with this particular exhibit is whether it was presented. That, that's what we're, that's what we're looking at, but they can present, you know, any arguments that they wish today, and it may help to inform the, the review of, of the plan by our professionals and help the public to understand as well.
And give it.
If you don't have that one.
Eileen, it should be on the disc I gave you, the computer disc.
Oh, hold on.
There would not be a hard copy because it's a, it's a movie.
Gave me a hard copy. I didn't do anything with the disc.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. I should have said that originally, sorry.
While we're waiting, there, I, I have one other point, not related to landscaping, but when we were before the board, the last week of August, there were some questions that came from the board members that I fielded, and I don't feel that I fielded them fully and accurately. They were with regard to what our client's responsibility was for road improvements. And I stated that our client was required to buy land. And I stated that our client had an eight hundred thousand dollar obligation. And I stated that there was no road improvement money that was part of the applicant, the applicant's responsibility. And I misstated that, I believe. So I went back and I, to review the, the language of the settlement agreement. The settlement agreement, which is part of the record, is the September fifth, two thousand nineteen Developers Agreement. And in that, our client had an obligation to buy land. And, and he did. He purchased land at a cost of two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And it was land that made available land for road improvements at the intersection of Sunnyside and Fort Plains. So that was done. But where I, I think I might have misspoke is the balance of five hundred and eighty thousand dollars is cash to be delivered to the township for the express purpose of making the road improvements in this area. And with permission, I would like to read the language because I think it's very clear. And I wish that I had read it when we were before you the last time. It says, further, this contribution, and the contribution is five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Further, this contribution will be used by the township to improve the intersection of Sunnyside Road and Fort Plains Road, including all of the property frontage along block one ten, lots one eighty-one and one eighty-two. It is agreed that the developer shall not be obligated to pay any other off-site contribution or perform any other off-site road improvements as a result of its development and/or its land use approvals, other than this contribution, other than, it says, the off-site contribution. And then it, it lays out the, the procedure for the payment. The payment is to be made ten thousand dollars per house for the first fifty-eight houses that are built on the project. So when I said that there was no cash for road improvements, I misspoke. And I wanted to make that clear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, while we're talking about roads, and go ahead, I'm sorry, Ron.
No, I got, you go ahead.
Let's say, while we're talking about roads, one of the comments we got from our DPW was if the roads would be maintained and met by a management group or homeowners association.
The, Mr. Chair, when we, and I'm not going to testify, I'll just repeat the statements that were placed on the record by Mr. Challoner, and as were shown on the plan. There are three roadways that are intended to be public roadways, three public roadways, Riverwood Drive, North Sterling Drive, and Harrington Court. These are the roads in the single-family subdivision, and they would be public roads. All other, all other roadways and parking lots would be maintained by a combination of two associations. So there would be associations with professional management, but through an, through associations.
So, very good, thank you.
Welcome. Thank you for that opportunity.
So, Mr. Page, and I, I just want to be clear, I'm not. So, Mr. Pape, and I I just want to be clear, I'm not taking a position necessarily at this time. But the developer's agreement is an agreement between the developer and the township itself. It's not in agreement with the planning board, correct?
There's no signature for the plan. It's the governing body and and then ultimately it went to the courts.
Right. Did it, uh? Did, did that requirement make its way into the ordinance? Is there a section that that we can rely upon in the ordinance that says that?
Oh. So, how hard I prepare, you can find a question that I done. I'm looking. Um, I know that Mr. Caruso is on. I'm going to ask Mr. Caruso if he could guide my hand if he can find it. And in the meantime, I am going through the ordinance. I know that there was. Cost-saving elements that made it in. It has it in general language, Mr. Cucero, under additional requirements, and it lists the waiver of cost generate, generative measures. But I do not see the road improvement language in the ordinance.
Okay.
And I apologize, I do have that video. But of course, I wasn't able to do anything with it because it's video, so.
Fair enough. I have, I have a question, Chairman, if I may.
Go ahead.
I know I brought this up at the last meeting. In the June 2017 traffic report. It, there was, there was a statement made that the applicant would be willing to make a fair share contribution toward the cost of the traffic signal. On Fort Plains and West Farms. And then we got into this developers agreement that is between, as the attorney said. The township and I, I'm not even sure when it was ratified by the governing body. Um, memorialized. That did not have it in there. And then I looked at the ordinance. Which again, Ron alluded to, that seems not to have any language in there about the offsite improvements for that signal. So, Ken, I think at the last meeting, you testified that the applicant was not willing now. To contribute towards the cost of that signal.
Uh, Mr. Nacastro, the, there had been a further negotiation where the request to contribute to the signal was converted to. A $580,000 cash contribution for road improvements. But I did not mean to say we would not participate in that specifically, but to say that the general contribution of 580 and the purchase of the land. Was intended to satisfy the applicant's applicant's burden.
As in, I, I mean, if I could just ask a question on that, though, and again, understanding that the planning board is not a party to that agreement. That specifically says it's for use for your entire traffic impacts, or is it specific to the intersection of Sunnyside and Fort Plains Road?
Yeah, uh, uh, it says for everything. I'll read it. It says. It says, it is agreed that the developer shall not be obligated to pay any other offsite contribution. Or perform any offsite road improvements as a result of its development and or its land use approval. Other than the capitalized term offsite contribution, which is the sum that I just identified.
And if you continue to read, it does say that that contribution is strictly for the intersection of Sunnyside and West Farms?
It, 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 it says. This contribution will be used by the township to improve the intersection of Sunnyside Road and Fort Plains Road. Including all of the property frontage along block 110 lots 181 and 182.
Mr. Pape, did, did the township provide some sort of estimate on how much it would cost to improve that develop, uh, that intersection? Is that the reason why that half a million came in? Into into play?
I do not know that. It was, it was the request that was made of the applicant. It, um. I I left out one sentence that I really should read in. It says, the developer shall tender the offsite contribution to the township to be used by the township. In its sole discretion for the realignment of Sunnyside Road. So there's, there's discretion vested with municipality.
So does.
For the realignment of Sunnyside Road, though, I just want to be clear. I mean, and I would defer to Ron because I'm not an attorney, but the language seems very specific that that contribution is for realignment of Sunnyside Road.
It does, and it also says the developer shall not be obligated to pay any other offsite contribution or perform any offsite road improvements. As a result of its development. That's.
I think we can come back to that, but, you know, it's. You can't amend an ordinance through a developer's agreement.
Can't amend an order?
Yeah, you can't, you can't. Nullify an approval through a developer's agreement. A developer's agreement is in furtherance of a, you know, of a, uh, of an approval. So. Yeah, there's. There's a process, you know, for a land use. Regulation. You know, it's, you adopt it through ordinance. And the ordinance gets referred to the planning board for determination as to substantial consistency. And depending upon what the planning board does, you know, there are certain voting requirements. There's an opportunity for neighbors to file an objection to the municipal. That has very specific voting requirements. And you cannot, under Title 40, amend the land use ordinance. By any other means than through, you know, the amendment of the ordinance itself. You can't. Uh, adopt some ancillary documents. So while it's not a meaningless document, you know, it may be persuasive. And how the board makes a determination, there's just nothing in this ordinance that that codifies it. So, you know, there's, there's a problem with the board saying that it's bound by documents that are not ordinances. When you look at. The case law, it's the planning board reviews the ordinance to determine consistency. And where there's not consistency, it determines whether relief should be granted or not granted. It doesn't, you know, the only, the only, um, documents that it looks at beyond that, which may preempt. Are state statutes, administrative code regulations, you know, things like that. Not a developer's agreement, you know, that that was, that was adopted. And like I said, I don't say it's not persuasive. You know, I I think it's, if I were to draw a rough parallel, I'd say it's the difference, you know, between a reported decision and a non-reported decision. You know, when a, when a court looks at it. So I, I I think it's a persuasive document, but the ordinance is the ordinance. And I think that's what you have to to look at. So I think your arguments are legitimate in terms of. You know, what you're asking the board to do, but I would frame them a little differently, that it's not a requirement on the board. But the board should perhaps be persuaded by the adoption of the developer's agreement.
Mr. Cuchero, I, um, if we were in front of a judge, I probably would be compelled to be more argumentative, but I like your approach and I. I'll adopt it for purposes of this evening. I'll tell you that in in September of 2019, there was a a written agreement. And it was ratified by the, by the municipality. Signed by Miss, by the representative of the municipality who signed it was, um, I never can say Brian's last name, the township manager signed it. September 5th, 2019. Reference is made to that document in the pleadings that went to the court. It actually makes this reference to the document as a document that has been reviewed and relied upon. And when the ordinance is written, the ordinance actually in its preamble identifies that there was this developer's agreement. Um, that had been entered into and that the ordinance was in furtherance level. So, um, but I I I, I, I adopt, accept your, your position to say. Uh, I do believe it is persuasive. I I think that there has been a, a four-year period from 2017 to day, today where. Your applicant has worked with the town, um, at all levels and with the professionals at all levels. That we have, we have accepted the burdens that were imposed on us. We, we are also relying upon the agreements that were struck. So I I think I'll leave it at that. I think, I think it's pretty, pretty clearly set forth before the, before the board members.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Okay, are we ready for Ovi?
Yes, please.
Alright, so, uh, the movie starts out, uh, this is, uh. Uh, looking in the northwest direction towards Fort Plains Road, standing in or standing inside the property. Uh, it pans. Uh, it's just a two-minute video. It just follows along the, uh, perimeter of the property, so the board gets a feeling of. Of the type of vegetation that surrounds this property, uh, to, um, the existing buffers. This is an area currently right there. There's an area of, of a gap. That, uh, Sherry identified, and we're increasing that area with, uh, with additional landscaping, a close, uh. Uh, uh, planting, uh, the vegetation, the close proximity to each other. And then as we expand across the northern boundary, this is the existing buffer line of the, of the conservation easement for the property next door. That buffer is, uh, very thick and in existing, so we sparsely populating new additional buffers in that area. And then we get to where the houses are where it's thin again. The applicant is now going to provide additional buffers along that, a full buffer screen. Uh, and then it pans over to the northeast corner of the property. Uh, and that is the existing wetland corridor, the joining wetland corridor to the east, the northeast. And then it's panning towards the south. Uh. Uh, and again, that's the north, that's all along the, uh, left side of the image is all the wetlands, the wetland, the riparian buffers, all those trees. Are proposed to remain. Uh, and now we're coming into the southern field. This is where the multifamily and, uh, coa units are. Again, you're looking at the southeast corner of the property, and then the image will, will pan. And that is the existing buffer along the argument farms. All those existing trees are proposed to remain. And the applicant is going to supplement that with an additional buffers. Uh, in the 25-foot new buffer that we're providing, but that's the existing buffer that exists on the property line today. Uh, then the exhibit or the image pans to along Fort Plains Road. You can see the cars on Fort Plains Road. Uh, and and then we, there's, try to give you a little bit different overview. That is looking in the northwest direction of the property. That's Fort Plains Road at the top of the image. Uh, panning to the south to argument farms, the existing buffer there. And that is, and then now that is the wetland portion of the property that is being preserved. That is the, uh. Uh, the portion of the property that's in the riparian buffer, uh, and the, and the wetlands to the east. And then it, and 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 of the pan in the northeast or northwest direction. And that's the end of the video. Um. And that was just, just there to try to share with the board the type of vegetation that is currently existing on the property today. Um, that the applicant, uh, is going to supplement with the plan that we just indicated, uh, tonight, that we submitted on, I I think on Tuesday.
I have a single sentence to add to it, and that is, that is the offer of the applicant. And ultimately, it is the determination of the Spiro as to the adequate of what was submitted.
You're, you're muted, Spiro.
Right, so, um, it certainly is, um, you know, up to, up to the board as to, um. What they would like to approve for that, but we did go out and that is what we saw. Um, you know, I can certainly expand on any of those.
Well, Sherry, just to to start with, I I just want to. Did, how much time have you had to review the landscaping plan?
The exhibit that they showed, I didn't get till after four o'clock today, so I I haven't. I haven't opened it on my.
Because I think that's what the chairman is is most concerned about, is providing the board's professionals adequate time to to review.
Yeah.
Is that correct, Mr. Chairman? Is that correct, Chairman?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. That I think it would be only appropriate to have our professionals properly review and comment on the proposed plan.
Okay.
Okay.
Understood. Mr. Sure, Mr. Chair, um, I have, uh, proposed one additional witness.
Well, actually, uh, Mr. Pape, just before you, and you can tell me if it's Mr. Challoner or another witness.
Sure.
Um, just with regard to the relief that's necessary, I just wanted to, we talked a little bit about it at the last T R C. The, uh, tree removal, um, requirements. Uh, can you just, I know you have a position on it. Can you just place that on the record?
Yes, the the tree removal requirement, again, it's in the developer's agreement. And it's in the ordinance in general language, but in the developer's agreement, it expressly states the applicant is relieved of any tree replacement contribution. And in the ordinance, it says all cost generative elements of the ordinance are not applicable to the project. So it is the position. Two positions. One, there's not a lot of trees that we're talking about, as you can see, it's open fields. And second, that there's no obligation on the applicant's part to make a contribution to the, uh, tree replacement ordinance. And a third is a lot of trees. And the third is, and I I think that at the end of the day, that there's an awful lot of trees going in and very few trees coming out.
So can we just, and and yet I don't know which witness it's for. Um, what would have been the, the tree replacement requirement? What do you actually, how many trees are you actually replacing?
Stuart, do you have tree removal and tree, uh, tree installation calculation?
Um, I I don't have those numbers in front of me. Um, obviously, there, it's, most of the development is in the farm areas. There are some existing trees around the existing farmstead. Um. All the perimeter trees are 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 going to remain. The only, only trees that are going to be coming down are along Fort Plains Road. Uh, substantial trees, and that's for the roadway in Fort Plains. Um, there will be some additional trees if the township realigns, uh, the roadway, the intersection of Sunnydale, but. That's out, outside the scope of our project, but those, those trees are substantial in that corner also. Um, but the onsite trees, only the areas of the, uh, farmstead, and then there's an existing. Um, wetland swell that the farmer used to drain the, the farm fields. Uh, doors, storm events that extends into the property. Outside of those two small areas, there's no additional trees coming down. So the, and and we're proposing shade trees, landscaping, uh, I I would assume, and I'm I'm sure Sherry, uh, can chime in. But I'm sure we far exceed the replacement requirements based on the number of trees that we're proposing.
Well, that's not, I mean, Mr. Mr. Pape said that you're not subject to it, which means that there was going to be a replacement requirement. Your testimony is. You satisfied the ordinance replacement requirement?
We are, we are, um, I I didn't, I didn't do a, a tree management plan since we weren't obligated to, uh, come up with a cost figure.
You just said it, though, so I mean, if you're going to say it, it has to be backed up by something.
Yeah, so we're proposing street trees and, uh, buffer trees. Uh, landscaping around the ponds, landscaping along Fort Plains Road. I I I guess since we're going to go back and and, uh, and review the landscaping, I could submit a replacement plan to show that we meet the ordinance. But I I feel that we do meet the ordinance.
Well, if you meet the ordinance. Just to, I defer to Sherry, but it's street trees do not count towards a replacement requirement, I don't believe.
That's correct, but but we are providing, uh, buffer trees, landscaping trees around the ponds. We're also providing trees along Fort Plains Road outside of the, of the, uh, immediate distance from the street. We're landscaping all the condo units. Um. I I I could put together a figure.
So I mean, if if the applicant complies, the issues moot. There's no argument, you know, that's, that's necessary. But if the applicant doesn't comply, I mean, I I have a similar position on this as we just described. It's something that's in a developer's agreement. That seems to be important, but it didn't make its way into the ordinance. So, you know, it's difficult for the planning board from a legal perspective. To say that the developer's agreement removes the obligation. I think that in this instance, to the extent you may not comply, like again, if you comply, it's moot. I think that you use the developer's agreement as an argument to, to get relief, uh, from the ordinance. But and also just on the general cost generative statement that's in the ordinance. But, and also just on the general cost generative statement that's in the ordinance, it doesn't specify anything. So having read it, I, I did do a little research and there is a New Jersey Supreme Court case by county development of Clinton. The borough of High Bridge. It's a 2002 decision. And the Supreme Court there references COA's rules, NJ AC 5,93-10.2, which discusses unnecessary cost generation. That was not one of the sections why the, the rules got knocked out later by the Supreme Court. That wasn't one of the sections the Supreme Court took issue with. But that section, as quoted by the New Jersey Supreme Court, states that cost generation is the combined impact of requirements that cumulatively prevent an inclusionary development from having the density and set aside necessary to address the municipal fair share obligation. Examples of such requirements include, but are not limited to building setbacks, spacing between buildings, impervious surface requirements and open space requirements. It then has an itemized list. I'm not going to go over all the items. But it does in section number six, it talks about excessive landscape buffering and reforestation requirements. But I think that the, the key word there is excessive. It doesn't say you're if I, from all requirements. And it has to be in conjunction with an argument that the requirement in some way prevents the inclusionary development from achieving the density and set aside necessary. So.
I don't know. I know the, the reason that I, I, you know that I appreciate the thoroughness of your presentation. In this instance, the ordinance, they actually has on page five of six, under additional requirements. The ord, this is now the ordinance. And it says, any inclusionary development within the ML-12 zone shall be exempt from the township tree replacement regulations set forth at 188, 194. So it actually made, that language made it into the order. Okay.
All right.
Okay. Thank you.
You're, thank, no. Thank you. The with permission, then, Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to have Mr. Nick Vederese be qualified and present his traffic study.
Okay. Fantastic. Before we go, before we do, do that, before we jump off Mr. Challoner, can I just ask my professionals, Ms. Newman, Ms. Beam, if they have any further questions for Mr. Challoner?
Mr. Chairman, I do. I just, you know, it seems as if the applicant's going to have to come back. I would note that we have 58 drainage comments, which have been a series of multiple iterations of reviews. So I would just suggest that we get some revisions and get a lot of these items ticked off. And I ask that I be given sufficient time to review that information in advance of a public hearing.
Well, as, as, with all, if I don't want, mean to put you on the spot, Ms. Newman, but can you summarize what those are so the board could, could pay attention to any revisions that may take place?
So, so Mr. Chairman, they're, they're all contained within our attached technical engineering review. Page nine, item C, it starts with one.
Sorry, Ms. Newman, I don't, that's not really what, I know what's in the report, which is more of a general like engineering. Dump it down for the layman people, please.
Understood, understood. We wanted some additional information regarding TSS removal rates. That's a requirement.
And what's a TSS, please?
Total suspended solids.
Thank you.
Details for the recharge and dry well systems. Discrepancies between the report and the plans, additional soil testing for the dry well and the recharge systems that we can establish seasonal high water table. And then there's multiple discrepancies between the storm sewer calculations and the plans and or profiles. Need for potential additional easements where storm pipes are behind curb lines. Just understanding that the applicant is here for preliminary and final. These were all carried from our prior review. So I would just ask that some attention be paid to these technical comments.
Thank you.
We'll take care of that.
Thank you. Ms. Bean, appreciate the summary, Ms. Newman.
I just, um, the only thing I really need to look at is landscaping that, you know, they're going to submit. Just to make sure, I mean, I, I defer to the species types and stuff like that to Sherry, but making sure that's, you know, it complies with the ordinance and doesn't require relief. I just need to take a look at it, you know, in the future. I mean, obviously they're going to submit it. So before the next meeting.
Fantastic. Thank you. Mr. Pape. I just, I just want to be clear, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pape, is there something different that's going to be submitted or is it this exhibit that the professional should be looking at?
Mr. Chall, that what was presented was intended to be an exhibit. It wasn't a, a submission item. Mr. Challoner, you could just, I think that the landscape plan will be, will be incorporated into the plans when we make a resubmission of the plans.
That's correct.
If I could, and, and realize that my only way of can, can talking to Mr. Challoner is this way. Mr. Challoner, if, just to think about timelines. The stormwater revisions that Ms. Newman just brought to your attention. Could you estimate the time that's required for you to make, to address all of those in report and plan format? And be ready to resubmit?
It'll probably take us three weeks because we have to do the additional borings. So I probably need three weeks.
Mr. Chairman, just to be fair, I don't want to make it sound like it was a misrepresentation. Mr. Pape said that I just brought to his attention. This is a fourth review.
No, no, I, I didn't mean it that way. I mean, I wanted him to respond to what you put on the record, not that it was a first. So Mr. Challoner, th- three weeks?
Correct.
Okay. So as we, as we work through this, I'll, I'll ask what the minister, the professionals at the town would require to complete their review of that. So that when we reschedule, we've accommodated both your requirements and the town professional requirements.
I would request two weeks prior to a public hearing.
That's very generous. Thank you. So, Mr. Chair, with permission, I'll go to Nick.
Yes, please. Are you on screen, Nick?
Yes.
Up, there you are. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give this board's the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please state and spell your name for the record.
Nicholas Verderese, V E R D E R E S E.
Okay, Mr. Pape, can you qualify, Mr. Vederese?
Sure. And Mr. Vederese, would you take a few moments to share with the board and the public your professional and educational background?
Yes, I have a bachelor's science degree in civil engineering from Rutgers University in 1990. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. Member the Institute of Transportation Engineers. I'm a senior principal, founder of Dynamic Traffic located in 1904 Main Street in Lake Como. I've appeared before this board a number of times as well as the Board of Adjustment in the township.
And Mr. Vederese, would you confirm that your license is in good standing in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, it is.
Mr. Chair, I ask that you accept Mr. Vederese as a professional engineer with an area of expertise in traffic.
We will. Thank you, Mr. Bean.
Thank you. Mr. Vederese, I'm going to ask if, if you would begin with me onsite. This is, and this is a project that is designed to be consistent with an ordinance. It is an application that is, could be referred to as of right. So I'm going to begin with all of the onsite elements and then go to the perimeter of the site. Onsite, have you reviewed all of the interior roadways and all of the parking lots? And confirmed that they can handle the anticipated traffic vehicles throughout?
Yeah. So to start with parking, there's three distinct, separate sections of the project. There's a single family section with 72 homes. That is required 180 parking spaces. On the properties, we're providing 252 parking spaces, which is a two-car garage and driveway combination. Additionally, and I didn't count them, but there's a significant number of on-street parking spaces as well. I would estimate to be over 100. So we have well in access of what's required in the single family section of the project. In the multifamily townhouse section, 155 units were required to provide 357 parking spaces. We are, again, on the properties between the garage driveway combination, providing 542 spaces. In addition to 122 on-street shared parking spaces, which are perpendicular parking spaces along the roadways. That's in excess of the requirement of point five per unit from the residential site improvement standards. In the additional 92 apartment units, we're required to provide two spaces per unit or 184 spaces. These are all in parking areas and essentially parking lots. And there are 190 spaces provided, again, in excess of the number. The distribution of the parking, if you look at the plan, you'll see they're well dispersed throughout the site with pockets of parking for visitors in proximity to the various units on the property. As far as the roadways, there are two distinct types of roadways. There are the public roads, as Mr. Pape mentioned earlier. Those are 30 feet wide. They meet the residential site improvement standards requirements for a neighborhood road. A 30 feet in width, with, with parking permitted along both sides of the roadway. In the multifamily section, the roadways are 24 feet wide. Parking is restricted to perpendicular parking. And I know there was a, a comment in Ms. Newman's review to provide no parking signage in the areas where there are not the perpendicular parking. And there are just curb areas that would need to be restricted. So in essence, the, the, the layout, as far as the roadway widths, the centerline radii, the radii at the intersection, the stop control, site triangles on the property. They're all in compliance with the residential site improvement standards, well-designed. Will be able to accommodate the necessary move-in vehicles, bus vehicles, as well as trash vehicles throughout the site. I think there was a request from the engineer to provide some vehicle circulation plans. And if that was required prior to an approval, I'm assuming that we can agree to provide those to you prior to the next meeting.
Would you comment on the connection points of this community to the existing public roads? I'm looking for you to comment on the conditions of the roads, straight level and adequacy of site distance at all driveways, at all, all roadways.
Yes. So there are two separate connection points or access points into the development along Fort Plains Road. They're separated by about 750 feet. The northerly most one is approximately 700 feet south of Sunnyside. So they're well dispersed, separated from each other. They provide good sightlines. The roadway straight through the, the front edge of the property, there is a, a vertical curve between Sunnyside and our northerly access point. But it's, it's flat enough that the sightlines are adequate for vehicles to enter or exit the property from that location. So I'm comfortable with the, with the location of the driveways, the sightlines provided and the general geometry proposed, the widths of the, those roadways, the radii of the roadways and the connection to the public roadway system.
Mr. Chair, board members, that is the testimony that the applicant presents to the board. As an of-right project, the, the requirement is all of the onsite conditions must be to these standards. The existing off-site conditions are A, they're, they're existing conditions that are not required to be addressed by the applicant. And B, in this instance, with the cash contribution and land acquisition that was provided for, as was discussed earlier this evening. The applicant submits that it has fully addressed its, its obligations to the town for off-site road improvements. Mr., yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Vederese is available to the board and the board's professionals for examination at this time.
Okay, thank you. Do any of our professionals have any comments or questions for Mr. Vederese? Just if, if Laura and Jen don't have any, and Mr. Vederese, I apologize, you may have, you may have stated or explained this, I just didn't hear. The initial traffic report and the subsequent traffic report with regard to the intersection it went from a level of service of E to, to an F, is that correct?
No, none, none of the movements went from an E level of service to an half level of service in our traffic study. I don't, I don't know which, our traffic study is dated January 15th, 2021.
What about the June 15th, 2017?
Yeah, I don't. I'm not relying on that one. I'm relying on this current study that has current traffic data associated with it.
But you submitted two reports. So how do you differentiate what happened in 2017 to 2021? Ryan, you could ask some questions. I'm just a little confused. No, no, that's, that's where I was going. So.
Well, there, we've done traffic counts subsequent. We've obtained traffic studies from other developments in the area and utilize all that current information to conclude what you see in our 2021 study.
And I guess maybe to, to highlight though, the current level of service is an E and an F, is that correct?
There are a number of different ones. There are some As, some Cs, some Fs, some Bs, Ds, all over the place. I'm assuming we're just talking about Fort Plains Road and West Farms Road at this point.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll be specific to the Fort Plains Road and West Farms Road intersection.
Correct.
I mean, you write in your report, I mean, you indicated to Ron, I, I think, no, but with the addition of the site traffic, the intersection is anticipated to operate with level of service E. Or better during the analyzed peak hours, with the exception of northbound left turn through movement and southbound approach of Fort Plains Road, which both continue to operate with level of service F during weekday and evening peak.
Correct. Yeah, they continue to operate at F. So it didn't go from E to F. Those movements were F already.
And the addition to your site traffic is taking all other operations to an E?
It takes one movement in the AM peak hour. It takes the southbound approach from a D to an E. Then the northbound right is a B, stays at a B. The westbound and eastbound are both A levels of service.
So I guess just going back to Mr. Nacastro's question. You know, something happened between 2017 and 2021. Your, your testimony is other developments had already brought the level of service to an F.
Well, there were also improvements constructed at the intersection. There was a, a northbound right turn lane constructed in 2017. There were left turn lanes constructed on West Farms Road. You've all witnessed it. Over the last four or five years, there are a series of improvements that were constructed there. So likely a combination of those improvements. Then some additional traffic counts and current data results in what you see as, what I would represent as the current conditions of the intersection.
So, I mean, the addition of a left turn lane would have reduced the level of service? It wouldn't have improved it?
It, it would improve certain movements and potentially reduce other movements at the same time. It, it would improve certain movements and potentially reduce other movements uh at the same time.
Well, but if it went from an E to an F overall, it had a more negative impact than positive impact.
Well, there, there is no o- overall level of service, it's all just by movement.
I don't understand that.
So there's. There's five different, I'll call it five different lane groups at the intersection. So in the eastbound, westbound direction. The main line, that counts as one lane group in each direction, so that's two. In the southbound direction, there's one lane, so that's a third, and the northbound, there's two lanes. It's the minor approach that counts as two, so there's five lane groups at the intersection.
Okay.
Each one is analyzed individually.
And so then what, what was at a level of E in two thousand seventeen? That became a level of F most recently, just so like, you know, everyone can understand.
All right, so I don't have that in front of me, but. I'll see if I can get my hands on it. Just so I make sure I'm looking at the correct study, uh, what was the date, uh, Ron, of that study?
I think Mister Nacaster has it in front of him.
June, June fifth, two thousand seventeen.
Yes, so I'm looking at the June fifth study now. Which is on page eight. Uh, table five. Uh, so what you see there, and I'll, I'll, I'll just talk about the one intersection again, the same intersection. Uh, eastbound, westbound uh calls out an A-level service uh for those movements. The northbound approach, you see, it says northbound left through right. So at that time, the left through right. Cause it was one shared lane, in the morning operated as a C. In the evening operated as an E. And with the project's traffic, the E went to an F. Now, the separate lanes.
So, no, just, just.
Two lanes, it changed the.
Vedderisi, can you just back up for one second? You said with the project, you, this project?
Yeah, so this traffic station, when you went from no build to build, you went from E to F.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure.
Subsequent to this study, there was an improvement on that approach, so there's now two separate lanes. So it's analyzed differently when there's two lanes. Uh, and the right turn is a B-level service and it stays at a B. However, the left turn. Uh, is now an, an F in what I'll call the existing condition. Because there have been other developments that came in in the area that took away some of the capacity. So it pushed the Nobel to an F.
In your report, it refers to PM, is that still just PM?
P, that was PM, yes, and then on the southbound, you had a D-level service in the AM. And F in the PM. And the F is is similar to what we represented in the new study as well. So the only, the only substantial difference is that on the northbound approach. Uh, there was a development constructed in that corner. Uh, that relies on most of its traffic to come out, the four plants go up to the intersection, I guess it has. Pretty sure it doesn't have an access directly onto West Farms. So, uh. They, they took that capacity, built a right turn lane, but they used the capacity while they were there. As well as the uh K-Hop job to the west and it's some through traffic in there. So it took the Nobel from an E uh to an F.
I don't know if you're correct about the access point on West Farms for that development.
Yeah, I don't know if it is or not.
I think there is.
If it is, it's probably just a right in, right out.
And that wouldn't be. Laura, do you know?
Uh, no, they have a left turn, they have a left turn. But they did, they, they end up using some of the capacity, because people come up to the intersection to go across Fort Plains. Or to make a left onto West Farms. Plus there's additional new through traffic, plus there's background growth, because that study was done in twenty seventeen. This study was done, you know, four years later. Um, so that we were constantly growing traffic at, at, at a rate of usually between one and two percent. Uh, so you start to add traffic to the background, basically to the existing. Uh, and then your analysis is to determine uh what the impacts are from the project at the intersection.
And how did you do your counts with COVID?
Uh, so we did, well, we did counts during COVID. But then we went back to some twenty seventeen counts, uh, and we ended up. Twenty seventeen cats were higher, so we ended up growing those to the twenty twenty time period that we did our counts. Cause we were, I think, in December of twenty twenty, our traffic counts. Um, so we did, we grew, like, we, we've been doing on every traffic study for the last, you know, year and a half or so. Finding historical data and generally, most of the time, uh, we're growing the traffic lines.
And I guess, just, just a question, and it sort of follows, follows up on how Mister Nacaster started. In your twenty seventeen report specifically on this intersection, you had noted that if the town were to undertake. A traffic signal warrant, you understood that you would have some obligation based upon your traffic volume. And that seems to no longer be in the twenty twenty-one report, so what in your professional opinion? Has changed, is a signal in fact warranted there? And do you have any obligation in flow of traffic to that intersection?
So my, uh, the reason for removing it was the, a long discussion you had about. Uh, some contributions to traffic improvements that were made as part of the developer agreement. So we felt that that contribution more than offset uh our fair share to any improvement here, which. You know, the next improvement, since all the physical improvements are essentially done at the intersection, the next improvement that. Uh, anyone would recommend to improve the operation would be to signalize the intersection. Uh, and then our fair share is well below that five hundred and eighty thousand dollar uh number that we spoke of earlier.
Okay, so Mister Vedderisi, then maybe you can help me, because you've been involved with the project a long time, I wasn't part of that agreement. But I know that that involves realignment of the intersection of Four Plains Road, Sunny Side Road, and I'm assuming some widening. So I guess maybe you can help me with what, what were the improvements that you felt as a traffic engineer were warranted? That got to that five hundred and eighty thousand dollar contribution, because. In order for you to say that you feel that that, your fair share towards that signal was included in this contribution, I think the board needs to understand. How we quantified that cost, because my reading of that agreement, and I understand we talked about it at length. Is it's very specific to realignment of Sunny Side Road and improvements at that intersection.
I, I think maybe I didn't say the last part of what I wanted to say. When Mister Pape read the, that section of the developer agreement, it talked about. That there would not be other off-site improvements. Impact fees assessed, because it would essentially all be placed towards that intersection. Um, so that's why I felt uh that there was no need to reference that anymore in the study. And, and in the end, um, I would say our fair share improvement to the intersection is likely. Some number less than thirty thousand dollars.
Understood, but we can agree that a signal would be the next, next step at that intersection due to the level of service?
If, if the town was looking to take on a signal there, uh, that would be the next level. There's no more physical improvements essentially uh that you could do, except maybe widen Ford Plains Road southbound. But the volumes are pretty low there, um, so I would say the geometry that you have is substantial at this point uh at the intersection.
And again, not knowing the nature of these improvements that are contemplated in the agreement. Could those improvements have any impact further on this intersection or any of the other intersections you analyzed in your report?
Could those, which ones those, which?
I'm just not understanding what the improvements are. For the realignment, if it's strictly geometry, if there was lanes added, so just understanding that. I understand that you have an obligation towards an improvement, I understand the agreement. Do any of those improvements impact or change your traffic report in any way, if they were perfected? Would they improve the situation, could they potentially make it worse?
Uh, I was not party to any of those discussions, so I don't know exactly what they were considering. But any improvement there. Could potentially reduce some of our impacts in the other areas, because. Um, if you're improving that intersection, it may make it easier and safer. Say, for people to choose Sunny Side instead of continuing north uh on Ford Plants. Uh, they may choose to turn right onto Sunny Side if, if that intersection was expanded with turning lanes uh and such. But I can't say uh what that improvement was, again, because it wasn't part of that discussion.
It was left, it was left to the discretion of the township as to what the improvement would be. It was referred to as roadway uh realignment. But there's, there's no detail, and it was the fun, the funding was specific to the applicant. And the improvement was specific to the municipality.
Laura, that was my question I, that I proposed before, as to where did they come up with that five hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollar. You, you know, cost for that realignment, and if there was any type of extra money that could be left over. To signalize that, that actual intersection.
To signalize the West Farms intersection, you're saying?
To signalize Fort Plains and Sunny Side Road.
Yeah, so the four point, from my review of Fort Plains and Sunny Side, uh, the volumes would not.
Uh, we're talking about Fort Plains and West Farms, I think the chief is. Right, chief, you, I think you mean.
Yeah, I know, Rob, I know you were talking about West, West Farms and Fort Plains. But since this agreement is specific to that intersection of improvements of Sunny Side and Fort Plains. That's where I started thinking that the improvements can also. Consist of signalizing that intersection as well. Due to the foreseeable, you know, increase in traffic in that area.
Well, I think, chief, to your, to your first question, which is how is the sum arrived at? I, I mean, other than Mister Pape perhaps, if Mister Vedderisi wasn't part of that process, none of the professionals here. Were part of the process, I, I don't know. That we have an answer, uh, Mister Cape, Mister Pape, you have. The greatest breadth of knowledge of, of any of us of that process, do you, do you happen to know the chief, the answer to the chief's question?
Yeah, that was the ask, that was the number, that was the ask that we were, we said yes to.
The ask by the township?
Yes, the town, during the negotiations that led up to the agreement, we were asked to make an eight hundred thousand dollar contribution. We, it, we, we were told that buying the land, they wanted us to buy the land, we did. We bought it at two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And we, the, the balance was to be in cash, and that, we didn't make up the number, it was the number that was the ask. Think, um, I don't recall if it was Andy Bayer, Joe Clark, but um, it, it came during those discussions of face-to-face discussions. And we said yes.
But Ron, I'm, I'm, I'm just, again, I don't want to beat a dead horse, unlike the other development. Family apartments, that was one hundred percent. Rentals, they were exempt from any impact fees. Therefore, they couldn't make a contribution, this is not in the same category, correct, this?
I, I, I don't have a recollection of the ordinance for the other one. But however, it's clear, in this case, the ordinance doesn't have that. Requirement, so as I stated before, I think that. You know, their, their, their argument is that their. Fair share contribution is zero. Uh, their pro-rata contribution is zero, the ordinance doesn't exempt them. Uh, from it, so they're relying upon a separate document that's not in the ordinance. And, you know, as Mister Pave said before, some of the things in the, uh, in the developer's agreement did make it to the ordinance, this one didn't. For whatever reason, so. You know, I, I think it's in the discretion of the board, um, I think it would work something like this if the board wanted. You know, with regard to Fort Plains Road and West Farms Road. If the board wanted to say that you owe a pro-rata contribution. You know, the board doesn't determine what the pro-rata is, you know, for any project. It can assign the obligation, but it's the township and the township engineering department that makes the determination. So, you know, if the township make, looks at it and says, you know, we believe that our developers' agreement. Has a contribution of zero, then they'll say the pro-rata contribution is zero. Um, so, you know, there's, there's two parts to it. But they're not exempt under the ordinance, you know, from making a pro-rata contribution.
Hey, Ron, can I get clarification on something, just, um, you know, we, we see these applications all the time and. Um, we always discuss the, the ingress and the egress of, of property, right? And that's what is under jurisdiction of the planning board. So hypothetically speaking, if a traffic report. Um, I'm not saying this one, uh, has negative impact to the surrounding infrastructure. That cannot be factored into the decision on. The application, correct, because we're looking at an ingress egress perspective, correct?
You couldn't deny it based upon that, it's just a matter of, you know, conditions, wh- what conditions are available. And one of them is that it has to warrant, you know, some sort of improvement. And in some cases, there's no warrant that, that's available here. The engineer has stated that there's a warrant, and that the only reason that the warrant was taken out of the report. Was based on their interpretation of the developer's agreement, but you couldn't say, no, we're gonna deny an application. Based upon some off-tracked uh issue. You know, the denial would have to be based upon ingress and egress, so this is merely, you know, a, a condition. That is driven by the fact that a warrant was created at a particular intersection.
Thank you.
If I may. Uh, one more point of clarification, if you could, Ron. Keep referencing the ordinance and the developer's agreement. Is the ordinance the controlling document?
For us, it is, um. So basically, the developer's agreement is an agreement between the township governing body and the developer. It is not, does not uh enact any legislative changes to the ordinance. The board is required to apply the ordinance. It's, you know, we have a permitted uses that we consider. And we determine whether it complies or doesn't comply with the ordinance, and if it doesn't, whether relief should be granted. That document, as I said, you know, can be persuasive in terms of granting relief from something, but it doesn't change. The terms of the ordinance, we still apply the ordinance as it's written.
Thank you.
My only comment at this time, as this. And, and I, I, I say this intentionally. Where, we did not come to argue or, or, or fight. You, you know that, we can, we are working within the four corners of all the agreements that have been written previously. Um, these points, we, I understand the points that are being made, but I can tell Mister Caruso's goal from day one was to, to. Work within the four corners of the agreements that had been negotiated, and that's what we're presenting. This is a lawyer talking, not an engineer, I don't design traffic signals. Never did, and I won't, but I do know that traffic signals don't cost five hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It typically costs less than half that, so the number that is being requested of Mister Caruso as part of this project. We felt was very, very high, and we said yes. I just want to make that point, we were not, we were not. There was, there was no fighting, there was, there was, there was an intentional cooperation, so.
Did I hear you correctly, Mister Pape, say that traffic signals on a less than five hundred and eighty thousand?
Uh, I mean, I, we, I've done, I have never done a traffic signal, I've just done traffic signal contracts with counties and towns and two seventy-five, three hundred. Is, is the number that I see for signals. Nick, um, help me out here with, with, with empirical data.
I'm right in line with your numbers, uh, two fifty to three hundred likely number to put a signal on at that intersection. Cause all the physical improvements are at the intersection already, so it's just the, the installation of the.
But that, Mister Nacaster, that would be engineering, electric, installation and electrifying. All that's in that number.
I'm just asking, because I usually hear the number of a million dollars.
No, 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 no.
Okay, so how do we clean that up, I mean, is there a way, Ron, to clean this up? You know, like. We have an ordinance that says one thing, they got a developer's agreement that says another. And it's really in the hands of the governing body, because they're the ones that, you know, gratify all this, so how do we handle it?
And, and I, I think, you know, I, I go back to what I said, that. You know, we look at the plain language of the ordinance, but I think we can look to. The uh developer's agreement, you know, in terms of some guidance, but at the end of the day. You know, I feel that. If the applicant is correct, there's really no detriment, because even if you say you owe a pro-rata contribution. To the improvements on Four Plains and uh. West Farm. We don't determine what that pro-rata is, that's, that's on the township uh engineering department. So they are bound by the developers agreement. So if they agree with the interpretation of the applicant, they're going to say your prorata is zero.
And I assure you, we're not looking to be relieved of our our burden. We've made that commitment and Mr. Crusoe is a man of his word. He made that commitment. So I'm not. I'm not looking for some methodology of getting that down.
Okay, so I think that's the answer. Mr. Pape has agreed that if there is a contribution needed to be made to the signalization of Fort Plains and West Farms, he's not against it.
But no, I what my statement was the $580,000 contribution, which far exceeds what we believe would be a fair share contribution. We were not looking to lower that number.
And I think that Ron, I think that Ron said the the ordinance is 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 void of telling us what that contribution can be used for, correct? Well, it's not that. No, it's. That's not exactly what I said. I said the ordinance does not exempt them from a prorata contribution. Mr. Pape's position is that the developers agreement does that. Well, not exempts, but it it establishes that $800,000 payment is covering all of their offsite prorata contributions, which they believe is actually more than prorata. Extra Rata. So so is it? Is it fair to say from a legal standpoint to protect the board? That if if we feel that based upon the testimony we've heard, it warrants a fair share contribution to signalizing Fort Plains and 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 West Farm Road, it's up to the township to decide that fair share? Yes, I think that what Mr. Vetterisi said is that all of his reports, you know, acknowledged that there is a warrant. The only reason that that discussion was removed was the applicant's interpretation of the developers agreement. And yes, ultimately, the township could take the position that the prorata contribution for that particular intersection is zero because their developers agreement exempts it. But if they share the same interpretation as the applicant. That's not for us to decide. The the dollar amount of the contribution is not for us to decide now. Fair enough. Mr. Nacaster, does that satisfy?
Yeah, I think it would just be in the resolution, Ron, that was saying that there is a pro issue recognized, but they it's up to the council to decide or the township.
Yes, yes, it's up to the council to interpret their agreement. You know, that we're not a part of. And if there is, you know, what the prorata, if any prorata, you know, under their agreement and how they interpret their agreement.
That protects the board and that cleans it up a little bit.
Yep, yeah. Is that fair, Mr. Pape?
I I I certainly have no argument with the statements that were made by Mr. Cucchiaro. And if it is this board's determination that we should go back to the governing body for for determination of fair share. It's with the the governing body that we entered into that agreement. So I have a level. I'd have to review it with Mr. Caruso in detail, but I have a comfort level that where we're going is 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 not improper.
Yeah, I think I think in this case, I think there's enough evidence from your professional that it's warranted and and the board feels that that we need to go that route. Ms. Newman, do you disagree?
No, I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Does that conclude your traffic testimony?
It does, Mr. Chair and and board members. And it concludes our intended direct presentation unless anyone wanted to hear from the architects, the architectural plans that have been submitted. And there have been no no negative comments on them from your professionals.
Well, I think even with no negative comments, I'm not saying that we need, you know, extensive testimony, but there should be some architectural testimony on the record.
Okay.
And that should take us. That should take us to our stopping point and allow you to come back and and present your updated landscape plan and storm management.
Okay. David Fisher is is the representative of K Haven Indian who is on the line tonight. And Mr. Fisher is familiar with the architecture that has been presented. And subject to his being led in and his willingness to present those plans to you, I'd like to present those through Mr. Fisher. So Mr. Fisher out there?
But actually, before we get to Mr. Fisher, Mr. Pape, and I don't know if this is for Mr. Vetterisi or or Mr. Challoner, did I hear there was going to be some garage parking?
Yes.
Okay, is the are you relying upon the garage parking in order to satisfy the RSIS parking requirement?
Yes.
All right, then I would just say to the board, my recommendation is a condition that there be some sort of deed restriction as well as an appropriate disclosure or some sort of restriction in whether it be lease agreements or governing HOA documents, whatever is required that the garages can't be used for storage in a manner that would prevent the storage of cars if we're going to rely upon those parking spaces to satisfy the RSIS.
If I could just jump in quick. We're so far over the requirement that technically if we didn't count the spaces inside the garage, we still exceed the parking requirement.
That's that's why I asked, because you said you were over whether you were counting them or not. So you're not counting them? Or you don't need to.
We were counting them in our calculation, but we didn't need to, I guess, maybe.
Well, then I guess you've got two choices. If you want to represent them as parking spaces, then I think you need the restriction. If you're comfortable that you still comply with RSIS without them, then just don't count them and you don't need the restriction.
Let's do a chart. Nick, let's do a chart to show that they're not required.
All right, so then we'll we'll come back to that at the next hearing. Okay, all right, so I I'm ready for for Mr. Fisher now.
Okay.
I'm trying to bring him in, but he's not. I don't know if he's not on or.
I don't see him. He's there.
Mr. Chair, if I might.
Go ahead, Mr. Seaman.
He's in the audience, but I can't get him to. I don't know if he's not at his computer or.
Hold on. Hold on, Eileen. Mr. Seaman has a question.
Go ahead.
So as I was reading through all of the testimony today, which was riveting stuff. I I noted specifically what you were just talking about, Ron, with the parking and the usage and doing some type of deed restriction. And I get it, you know, as a real estate broker, I deal with a lot of HOAs and those things. And I just wonder how practical that would be to enact and enforce as a deed restriction. I mean, I just, I don't.
Right. Well, I can. I can tell you. Any enforcement is usually complaint driven, whether you're at an HOA, whether you're a zoning officer. I can tell you I involuntarily served on my own HOA for several years. You wake up to tons of emails of complaints, you know, so there's no shortage of people who, you know, identify violations and and complain. It's not, you know, for this board. And, you know, as an HOA matter, it typically wouldn't even be for the town. But if you're going to count them, I think the board has a responsibility to make sure that they're available if you're going to count them as spaces. And it sounds like and it sounds like they may be able to not have to count them. Right. So let's see what they come back, Mr. Seaman, at the next hearing and we will view the counts at that time.
And and just to kind of piggyback on what Ron was saying, what we've seen in town too in Townhouse Development is when there is the use of those garage spaces as compliance with RSIS, technically, they meet all the requirements on paper. But yet people don't use the garages for their actual car. They put stuff in there. They store stuff in that garage. And so then the cars that were supposed to be in the garage are now on the street, which cannot accommodate and and the parking becomes an absolute disaster. So if they don't need it, that's one thing. If they do need it, then I I do agree that the deed restriction needs to be in place because we've seen it. There's a development up on Strickland Road that's a disaster because there's not enough parking because people use the garages as storage and their cars are on the street, cannot be accommodated in the development.
Hey, I can I can tell you.
Resident of that development that you just referenced. And we have no parking requirement, but we do have over one space per unit in the common area. So that's why we're and we have single car garages. So yes, we do use our garages and I'm one of those residents that you're speaking of that's using this garage.
I can tell you also, Mr. Chairman, I've had this conversation with Mr. Fisher probably a dozen times over the last year in various different projects. He's agreed to it in every single one. So it would be a surprise to me if he didn't agree with it tonight, but, you know, we'll see. And fair enough. Thank you. Mr. Seaman, does that satisfy your question?
Yeah, no, I was just just curious about the practicality of it and just thinking about it from a human level and, you know.
Very good. Thank you.
Are you still not able to get him in?
No, he's not.
All right, we'll have to carry him. It's almost 10 o'clock anyways. We'll have to. We'll have to.
If I may, Mr. Chair. I think that we have an obligation to re to address the stormwater issues, which we acknowledge and put a timeline on it that would take approximately five weeks for Stu three and and Laura two. We have an obligation to have the landscape plan formalized and made a part of the submission. I think if we're going to have a five week period, we'll we'll work diligently to go through all of the other. Which I think is becoming a small list of technicalities. And I will make certain that we have the architect loaded and in and ready to go. I I don't think that's going to be a lengthy test presentation at all. And I agree with Mr. Cucchiaro that the request that was just made is is a reasonable one and I expect that it'll be agreed to. With your permission, I'd ask if we could establish the next time that we return to this board.
Yeah, so our November schedule is a little different because of the league municipalities and.
We only have one meeting and there's three things on that night. That's only a month from now. December 2nd would be our next meeting and there's three applications on that evening. And then we have December 16th, which has one of Mr. Pape's cases on.
Which one is on?
The 16th, dime nine.
Dime nine, okay. December 16th would work. Dime nine does not have an urgency about it. And and actually, we could probably, I think we could do both. I know that this isn't imposition, but I would I would like to explore with you. Would you consider creating another special meeting to wrap this up? Is that? Is that a possibility?
The reason we only have one meeting in November is generally due to the unavailability due to the league and to and to Thanksgiving.
All the holidays for the township. There's Columbus.
Well, but what we can do, Mr. Pape, is we could, you know, agree that on the 16th, this will be the first thing on the application and, you know, we'll see if we get to dime nine or not. I agree with you. I think that there, you know, is cleanup with regard to your affirmative case, and then we open it to the public. So I don't see why we should not be able to finish on the 16th.
All right. I appreciate the diligence of all of the professionals and the board members in their handling of this matter. I look forward to working with you to a conclusion.
Don't don't jump off yet, Mr. Pate. Mr. Gerardo had a question.
We can wait. It's not 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 pressing.
Well, I mean, no, let's let's ask your question so that they they can answer it at the next meeting.
Thank you.
I was just, I I thought the first meeting that we had, you had three HOAs. Now you're saying you have two HOAs in this development.
There's a master and there's two subs.
A master and two subs. Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Pape, would you grant the board another extension of time through the end of December?
On behalf of the applicant and on the record, there's an extension granted to the board to complete their deliberations and take formal action through December 31st, 2021, which will be followed up by a letter to you tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Okay, then the application of FP How LLC application number SD 2990 will be carried to the boards December 16th, 2021 meeting, which will be a virtual meeting beginning at seven o'clock. The instructions on how to access the meeting will be available at least 10 days prior on the township's website. All documents associated with the hearing will also be available on the township's website. Any questions, you can certainly contact Eileen in the planning and zoning department and obviously the, as I said, all the documents are on the website and available for inspection and copying if you wish. There'll be no further notice to property owners. Mr. Mr. Cuchero, Mr. Pape said he was going to take care of the landscaping, the storm, but he did not state the lighting as well.
Oh, lighting. Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome. And the extra traffic, I guess, counts for the garage. Mr. Pape was talking about so they can determine whether it is they're going to rely or or not rely upon the garage spaces.
And as we did the last time, we'll order the transcript from Angela so that it can be distributed to the board members in advance.
Thank you, Mr. Pape.
Thank you.
Ron, Ron, I got a question. In regards to that, that settlement with that $588,000, is there any way that we can obtain documents through the officials in the township as to what that $588,000 covered?
Yeah, I'll I'll reach out to to see what they have to help explain it.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Hey, we ready to adjourn? Do we have any other business?
I mean, Mr. Plan.
And thank you and good night.
Okay, everyone have a good night. Motion to adjourn? Yeah, we'll have motion to. Have a good night. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.